Welcome, everybody, to the June 7, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. At this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and then we'll do a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ron Busker.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda is the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Busker. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries. Fifth on our list is the 2018 Tyler Public Sector Excellence Award to Department of Equalizations. Call on Gordon Wendell to speak on Department of Equalization. Did I pronounce that right? Gordon.
Gordon Wendell.
Wendell, yeah.
As a matter of fact, that was the first part of my speech here. Good morning, I'm Gordon Wendell. Deputy Director for Pennington County Equalization. I am here this morning to talk to you about the 2018 Tyler Technology Excellence Award that our office recently received. Ideally, I would ad lib a little of this speech to make it more interesting, but I'm not going to. Instead, I brought a visual aid.
Deb, can you come up here?
The people at the top always get the accolades, and certainly Shannon Rittberger and his leadership and his desire to integrate technology into our office were instrumental in getting us where we need to be. But, another key to our success is Canvas Specialist Deb Groth. Exhibit A. Who put in the boots-on-the-ground stress, and I underline and bold that stress, to make it all happen. The people at Tyler Technologies have immense respect for Deb and her abilities, and that's very true. I mean, they...
Basically offered her a job, I think, so...
So, oh, here was supposed to be the funny part of the speech. So here she is with the award, which weighs about ninety-seven pounds. It's crystal. Tyler Technologies is the largest software company dedicated exclusively to serving governmental offices. They have offices in seventeen states and Toronto, and employ over five thousand people. Their products cover seven sectors, including appraisal and tax services, which of course we use, and there are forty-five products, including Orion, which is a computer-assisted mass appraisal product that we use. We were judged in the appraisal and tax division on six categories, including organizational efficiency and productivity. Two areas where we improved efficiency include: We added the sales comparison model, which you all are familiar with, which we can instantaneously provide comparable sales data for property owners and the Board of Equalization to support the assessments. Mapping those sales with the Canvas system has also become an important visual aid. But more recently, we began using Orion's integrated mobile solution, which includes using computer tablets in the field. And this enables us to reduce reappraisal time, eliminating the need to print thousands of property record cards and maps for fieldwork. Enables us to make data changes in the field, eliminating redundancies such as having to go back to the office to re-enter data. Enables us to save time by using the tablets to take pictures, eliminating the need to download them later. And that one has been a big deal for our office. The appraisers just absolutely love that. Attached the pictures right in the field before they had to go back, and just ate up a lot of time. Enables us to increase the number of reappraisals we get done in a given year, and enables us to reduce time spent on building permits. I certainly appreciate our entire staff's willingness to adapt to the new methodologies needed with the integration of the new technology. Thank you.
Gordon, you know, I think you guys did an exceptional job. Could you tell us a little bit about the convention that you had, you brought to Rapid City and organized?
Um, yeah. One of the appraisers in our office, Joe Doran, was the president of the South Dakota Assessors' Office this year, and he put on a conference here in Rapid City, which was very well-attended. We had close to a hundred and fifty attendees. We had a variety of different classes. I actually taught one of them on using tablets in the field, and that went well for me. The conference, it was a lot of fun, but yet there were a lot of learning opportunities as well. And to have one of our staff be president and put on such a great conference was a real tribute to the abilities that our staff has, just another example of one of our staff really stepping out there. Yeah, next year, I guess it's in spearfish, but...
Well, good deal. I heard you guys put a lot of work in, and reading through this, Gordon, your guys' department, this is a pretty prestigious award to get, and I want to thank you and your staff for all the work that you do, Shannon and the whole department. With that, I'll open up to see if any commissioners have any other...
Chair. Mr. Santos. I had the pleasure of attending the convention as well, and it was, it was excellent. There was so much knowledge to be imparted with the different classes and that kind of stuff. I was really, really interested, learned a lot in that class, how the environmental impact on real estate values was really enlightening for me. I appreciated, appreciated the opportunity to go to that. It was great.
Good deal.
So, thank you.
Did you have a comment?
Malcolm Chapman actually did the, I don't know what you call it, the main speech there, and he did just a heck of a, heck of a job.
Ms. Deb, I always knew you were amazing. You worked very hard, and you always have, for our Equalization Department, and we appreciate you a whole lot. I've seen you, she actually walks by my shop a lot with Chris every day, but she just, she always has gone above and beyond, and we really appreciate what you do for us, Deb and Equalization and Gordon, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deb. Where'd you want that back from?
Well, thank you, guys. Next on the agenda is Consent Agenda, Ms. Hugley.
Good morning, Commissioners. All Hennes, Commissioner Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses the Consent Agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The Consent Agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the Consent Agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's Consent Agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Number seven is to authorize the chair's signature to the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Lakota Lake Encampment Road District, effective for tax year two thousand and eighteen and after, with the legal description as presented by the auditor. Number eight is to authorize the chair's signature to the Order of Organization and Incorporation for the Woodland Court Road District, effective tax year two thousand and eighteen and after, with legal presented, legal description as presented by the auditor. And finally, number nine is to approve the request to apply for a grant from the John T. V. Kurvich Foundation in the amount of seventy-five thousand, as submitted by Health and Human Services.
Would anybody from the public like anything from Consent Agenda polled for discussion? Seeing none, any from the board? Nope. There's nothing to be polled. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Hickok, seconded by DeSanto. For approval of the Consent Agenda, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we come to item ten from the auditor. Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning, Cindy Muller, Chief Deputy Auditor in the Auditor's Office. This morning, we, the first item that the Auditor's Office has is the dissolution of the Longview Sanitary District by the District Directors. So, we are asking for the board to authorize the chair's signature to the order for dissolution of the Longview Sanitary District.
That'd be my motion.
Been moved by Hickok.
Second.
Seconded by Busker. I think since we got a motion on the floor, we'll just... Any further discussion from the board on this? Motions to approve the dissolution of the Longview Sanitary District. No discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Al.
The next item that we have is new malt beverage and South Dakota Farm license, new malt beverage license and a new wine license. The businesses are Black Hills Helicopter for their retail on-sale wine, Black Hills Helicopter for the off-sale malt beverage, Firehouse Wine Cellars for malt beverage and license and South Dakota Farm wine, and the Firehouse Wine Cellar for a retail on-sale malt beverage. We are asking for approval of those licenses.
Chair.
Ms. Hickok.
Motion for approval of the following license and to hold the license until property taxes are paid. Black Hills Helicopters Incorporated, Firehouse Wine Cellars. Did I miss any? That's it, on that one.
That must be the next one, two of them. Yeah, Black Hills, two for Black Hills Helicopter and two for Firehouse Wine.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, there's been a motion?
Second.
And second, and the motion is to approve the retail malt beverage wine and South Dakota Farm wine licenses as presented and hold the license until property taxes are paid? Is that what the motion was?
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Any discussion from the public? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. The next item that we have is an off-sale malt beverage renewal. There are three different businesses listed. There's Johnson Siding General Store, The Sugar Shack, and TK Saloon and Grill. We would ask for approval of these licenses.
That'd be my motion.
It's been moved. Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to approve malt liquor, malt beverage wine and South Dakota Farm license renewals as presented, and to hold the license until property taxes are paid?
Yep.
All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item that we have is a special request for retail on-sale malt beverage and wine license. It is to be issued to Level Wine Bar for an event that will be held at Black Hills Receptions out on West Highway forty-four. We would ask approval for that license.
That'd be my motion. Chair.
It's been moved to approve a special request malt liquor beverage and wine license as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Now, Cindy, do I need to have this one that's in the book signed by everybody?
By everyone, yes, please.
Okay. This is a copy for...
This is just our copy.
Okay.
The next item that we have is the official canvas of the election results, and we would ask for a motion to accept the canvas and declare the results of the June fifth, two thousand and eighteen, primary election official, and authorize the Commissioners present to sign the official canvas, and further move to authorize payment of all expenses as listed.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
That'd be my motion.
Motion made by Hickok. Seconded by Busker to accept the canvas and declare the results. The June fifth, twenty eighteen, primary election officials authorized Commissioners present, sign an official canvas, further move to authorize the payments to the election expenses presented.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
Congratulations, Ms. Cindy.
Thank you very much.
You worked very hard. I appreciate all the work people did. Congratulations to Mr. Ross Connect and others that worked hard on this campaign, and I appreciate all the help that people gave me in our community. I see you worked very hard, Ms. Cindy, and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One no for Mark?
Commissioners.
Just a second, folks, let me get this. Pass this around. Next, items from Equalization.
I think we've already established I'm Gordon Wendell with the Director of Equalization's Office. I only have one abatement request. It's a mobile home. The amount being abated is a hundred and fifty-eight eighty-two. The reason for the abatement is that the mobile home was destroyed and halted by the City of New Underwood.
Motion to approve the abatement.
Moved by Busker to approve.
Second.
Seconded by DeSanto. Any discussion from the public? Any from the board? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Items from Emergency Service Communications Center.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ted Ruffel Jr., Pennington County, nine-one-one, Deputy Director. Director Carley's unable to be here today. He asked me to present this item for your consideration. Sheriff Thome's here to represent our Users Board, should you have any questions of them. And then our Users Board Chair, Chief Carl Jagris, from the Police Department, he presented this to the Rapid City Council Monday night, and they have approved it. This is a revised joint powers agreement, and we're asking you to approve this today. This is the agreement between the county, the city, and the South Dakota Department of Public Safety for the state radio dispatch services that we provide to them. The original JPA was approved in May of two thousand and fifteen. This JPA, the current JPA, requires an amendment anytime the state's contribution increases more than three percent in a budget year, which is the case, which is why we're coming before you today. The changes to the JPA simply reflect their increased amount. They'll be paying a three percent increase this budget year, a three percent increase in two thousand and nineteen, and then they'll also pay an additional sixty thousand dollars by June of two thousand and nineteen to help offset personnel costs. The Department of Public Safety needs this JPA to be approved by June eleventh in order to commit some current-year budget funds that they have. So that's why we've been rushing this through. We've been actually working on this quite a while, this negotiation, and it's a good deal for the county, it's a good deal for the city. Any additional funds they put in lowers your costs, so I would ask for just a motion to approve the revised JPA and authorize the chair's signature, and I would stop there to see if you have any questions, and Sheriff Thome may also...
Thank you, Ted. Mr. Thome.
Thank you. Kevin Thome, Pennington County Sheriff, and just to reiterate what Ted said, on behalf of the board, we do support this. We supported it originally. It's a good example of intergovernmental cooperation in sharing the services. When we first took on the state radio services, if you will, we weren't a hundred percent sure as to the total impact. We had a feel for that. You know, since then, it was more impact than we had anticipated, but the state has stepped up with additional funding for additional person to, you know, carry that workload for us. So that's really the background on why this came forward. The board clearly supports it, and as for your support in approving it...
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
So again, the increase was because of the FTE? I mean, what, what's the total amount of the increase?
The total amount will be, it's sixty-nine thousand dollars is what the total amount, net result for this year in two thousand and nineteen, to offset personal costs of one FTE.
So we give sixty-nine, or that split?
Oh, that's, that's the additional amount the state will pay over and above what they were already paying.
Okay. And then we put in how much more?
Well, the county share, after all the other revenue sources are calculated, and the city and county split the difference, two-thirds, one-third. So this doesn't, this particular action doesn't cost the county or city anything more. It reduces your share.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions from the board? I'd look for a motion for...
Move to approve.
Moved by DeSanto to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Busker. Discussion from the public? Any more from the board? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, Ted. Next, we come to items from the Highway Department. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Wilsey, Pennington County Highway Department. Excuse me. First item on the, item A is Black Hills Back Forty Mountain Bike Raise, permit to occupy right-of-way. We have an application for the permit to occupy right-of-way for Emily Wheeler, who is about one mile of Norris Peak Road from Johnson Siding up to the top of the hill and at that location. I attached her map of the proposed route. The event will occur on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Sheriff's Office has been contacted, been included in the conversation with the racing coordinators. Motion is required, requested to approve the application for permit to occupy the right-of-way for the Black Hills Back Forty Mountain Bike Raise, and authorize Pennington Highway Superintendent to sign the application.
Chairman, that'd be my motion.
Motion made by Ms. Hickok.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DeSanto. Any discussion from the public on that? Commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. One no from Mr. Farabee. Motion carries.
Item B, authorization to purchase two, two thousand and eighteen, John Deere seven-seventy-two GP motor graders off the Minnesota State bid. Pennington County Highway Department requests authorization, purchase two motor graders off the Minnesota State bid. The bid was awarded to RDO Equipment Company. I attached bid documents as accepted by the State of Minnesota. Pennington County has two machines that came out of warranty on September twentieth of sixteen. Highway Department is wishing to replace these two motor graders. Cost for these motor graders will be to a total of four hundred forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. This is factored in for a trade-in for the two two thousand and nine motor graders as allowed by the Minnesota State bids. Funds for these purchases of these motor graders are included in our two thousand and eighteen budget. I attached the worksheet for the motor graders as submitted by RDO Equipment. Highway Department will remove and reuse the front scarefire, rear ripper, and wing plow mounts. This will save us approximately twenty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars per unit. Pennington County Highway Department is requesting the following motions. First motion is to authorize the Highway Department to purchase the two two thousand and eighteen John Deere seven-seventy-two GP motor graders off the Minnesota State bid for a total price of four hundred forty-two, four hundred forty-four thousand two hundred and ninety dollars. And with approval of the first motion, requesting a motion to declare surplus for trade-in the two two thousand and nine John Deere motor graders.
Thank you, Tom. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Tom, how many hours are on these bottles?
One of the machines has over six thousand hours, the other one has about fifty-three hundred hours.
Okay. Last year, after our discussion last year, I went and did quite a bit, quite a bit of research and gathered from both John Deere dealerships, mechanics, foremen for, for the mechanic shop, and from the Caterpillar dealership, that these, these pieces of equipment should operate pretty much carefree with regular maintenance for fourteen, at least fourteen thousand hours, if not more. And so I question why we would be replacing them at six thousand hours, just because the warranty is gone. We have mechanics that can work on our equipment in shop, and, and I just have a very, very difficult time justifying this. I was also, second question for you is, why are we not offering bid opportunities to Caterpillar?
I'll answer the first ones, the second one first. I have had discussions with Caterpillar, it's more expensive.
Okay.
They put, it's the dollars. For the equivalent machine, it's quite a bit more. I have a...
What do the warranties look like?
Their warranty, I believe, is a six-year warranty, where John Deere is a seven.
Okay.
The other thing is, you were talking about fourteen thousand, that is getting down to the, what is considered a third market. There's first market, which would be us, second market, when we trade in, they can get more money for them, the dealerships, and the third market is when your trade-in is worth nothing, to be blunt. We try to trade ours in when we can get something in our trade-in to reduce our costs. We also looked at the costs for operating, and cost per hour goes up when we have to do all of our own maintenance. We found that, I use six thousand dollars a year for repairs, and I found that the cost didn't go up significantly, it went up about four dollars an hour to operate them. And that's just on regular maintenance. If you have a large repair that you have to do, it goes up, goes up crazy from there. We had one machine where they had to do a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of repair. Our hydraulic system completely went out. We figured that in, and it more than doubled the per-hour cost. So that is what we're trying to avoid. We have to have our equipment ready in emergencies.
I understand that. The, that hydraulic system going out, was that as the result of abuse, or just that it went out?
Just went out. That, that was a, just from the use, it just went.
Okay. All right. Appreciate you answering that.
Yep.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok, you done?
I'm done.
Sorry. I didn't know if you were done, Mark. So it's, the total amount is six twenty-one two ninety, right, of the equipment? And then you're going to trade in at a hundred and seventy-seven thousand? And then your total is four forty-four two ninety?
That is correct.
Okay. So my motion is to authorize Highway Department to purchase two two thousand and eighteen John Deere seven-seventy-two GP motor graders off the Minnesota State bid for the total price of four forty-four ninety.
I'll, I'll second that for discussion. So any further discussion?
I have a substitute motion. My substitute motion is to continue this until I have a chance to go and talk to the two different dealerships and, and do a little more research.
Second.
There's been a motion, substitute motion to continue to the next meeting till you can go...
That's done.
We have a second by Busker. Any discussion on the second substitute motion?
We probably should set a time.
Mr. Farabee.
Probably should set a time for, for the continuation.
To the next meeting, I said.
Oh, set time in my motion?
Well, did you just say the next meeting, or you said it, so you got time, time to research it?
Continue to next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman.
Ms. Hickok.
While you're researching this, I would hope that Tom's in the loop with it and maybe bring him with you, because that makes a big difference when he knows kind of what's going on as well. It's, and always try to bring the staff, Mark, with me just to, and he might learn some other stuff, too, so. Thank you, Mark.
Tom, Tom, and Mark, if you guys come up with some stuff, send it to me so I can do a little bit of research on that, too.
Pardon?
If you guys come up with some stuff, please send it to me also, because my, I'll talk on the continuation motion. Having to work with some of these equipments and so forth, you know, I kind of hate to delay stuff, so I was going to ask the question about the hours and the answer to properly for me, so I'm in favor of approving these, but I just like, I'm sure you guys will put it in our packet, but I appreciate it. So the motion on the floor is to continue this to the next, next Commissioners meeting to gather a little more information so Tom and Mark could work together. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Motion carries now, listen.
Third item. Action on South Rochford Road Project. The latest federal omnibus bill allows us another opportunity to consider repurposing of the funds earmarked for the South Rochford Road Project. I was informed near the end of April of this development by Joel Junt. From the DOT. Copy of our email correspondence since then is attached for your review. Also included is the letter that Mr. Junt sent to us last year explaining our options. The options are the same, the dates and amounts of funds to be repaid would be revised based upon the work that has been completed since last year. To date, the alignment of this project has been completed. No different than what I brought to you last year. Plans are being worked on and be ready for right-of-way acquisition later this year. We anticipate that September or October. As brought to your attention last year, completion of the final Zion beginning of the right-of-way acquisition must be done prior to December of this year. Failure to meet this day, deadline may result in the funds for the project being lost. If we were to repurpose, the Sharon Lake Road Project would be the likely candidate for repurposing of the funds. I included an estimate of the repurposed funds. As explained in attachment to, with this letter. These ones were computed from our last billing that we got from the state. So we know that there has been work in the last two months since this, so. We will have to, if we were to repurpose, it would end up being a little different than what these numbers are. Cause there is work being done right now. Um, we're requesting, we, uh, we are requesting. A decision to be made as to whether we're going to continue moving forward with this project or repurpose the funds to another project. The reason for that is because the DOT's deadline is the first of June, first of July. I told him that we could make the decision before July third meeting. He said that would be about, about as long as he would want to wait. That, there is a lot of paperwork and public meetings that we have to hold. And for it to be done in time.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Very curious, Tom. Considering all of these deadlines that we have. When you heard about this in April, why weren't we made aware of it?
This is a month ago, I was trying to get all the facts together. Mr. Junt just told it to me as an offhand comment at the end of April. And I was trying to get the facts ready for you guys.
He didn't receive a letter from Mr. Junt or an email from?
These emails. That, you can see the dates of emails.
May fifteenth.
This is a lot of money. Um, in a very short period of time to be making decisions on it and. I, I just wish we would have been made aware of this sooner. Um, whether it was. You know, I understand your, your need to, to get all of the facts, but I, I feel that the board should have been aware of this as soon as. Joel Junt spoke a word of the possibility of this repurposing. But, my opinion.
I, I was just trying to make sure all the bases were covered, that everything was correct. This was, happened at, the conversation happened at a social event. With Joel. And I had to clarify and get everything figured out.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Busker?
You're sure we're going to hit, meet the December deadline?
I'm quite comfortable in that, yes.
If we start right now, we will?
Yes, we are within a month of, we are planning a meeting to do a final review of alignment and beginning of the design. Once we get that all finalized. It's a month or two to get the plan still. We can.
And you, and you would just have to start acquiring right-of-way?
That is correct. Once we start acquiring the debt, the right-of-way, the deadline has been made.
Everybody?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
I'd just like to mention one more thing for the public. Um. If I remember correctly, the Sheridan Lake Pro, Road Project came in over budget by eleven million dollars, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman?
Ms. Haddock.
So Tom, when we do, basically we have to do the alignment of the project. Needs to be completed. And the right-of-way acquisition. Is usually, takes how long?
Acquisition could take up to a year.
So once we start acquiring, this project's moving forward and can't turn back?
Once we start acquiring, that is dedication of the funds.
Okay. Just so we, we know that as a board.
That is the way the feds look at it. Once we have started right-of-way acquisition, that is, the funds are dedicated.
Okay. You done?
Um, yes.
Thanks, Tom, for bringing this forward. You know, I understand Mark's concern with some of the timelines, but I think we went into great lengths and discussions about this last year. We held plenty of, of, of public meetings, we took a lot of input. And, and I think we're just. Right back in the same boat, except we expended more money than we did last year. Already where we're at. So. I'm still approval of moving forward with Rochford Road and so forth. I'd look at the commission to, to, we either make the motion to move forward. Or we make another motion to try and repurpose, but I, I think we've done too much work to, to go back.
So, so, Chairman, sorry.
Go ahead.
I remember.
Go ahead, Mr.
Apologize. So what would be the motion, Tom, to move forward if we wanted to move forward with this project, sir?
Very honestly, we don't need a motion for that. If we want to move forward, I would need a motion that we're going to repurpose if we're going to do that.
So if we're gonna repurpose?
Repurpose, it's business as usual right now. That's just telling, that way I can tell peer that no, we're not going to repurpose.
I, I would suggest a motion just to move forward.
Yes, I, I would say to move forward and, and maybe, Tom, we can have that repurposing discussion on Sheridan Lake. And see what, how that moves forward. So, um. I, I would make a motion to move forward on Rochford Road doing the alignment. And getting the right-of-way.
I'll second that. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Busker?
As probably everybody in here knows, uh, I've been against this project since it started, but, but that was a waste of money. However, uh, at the, was it a year ago we voted on it?
Yes.
And I voted to, go ahead with it. Uh. Poor point, we've gone down the road too far now. And, uh, I think, uh, there has to be final determinations on, on stuff that comes before this board. We can't keep bringing up the same question time and time again, cause some people didn't like the way it turned out the last time. Uh, there has to be a final determination, and I've made my final determination. I think the people that were involved have an expectation from the last time we voted and. Um, not to disappoint them and say, no, no, second thought, we're not gonna do it, I think is wrong. And maybe they've made plans and maybe they've proceeded on their own, uh, projects. Because we said we're going to do it. I, I don't know that for a fact, but anyway. I'm, uh, in favor of continuing with what we've got.
Any further discussion?
I'm gonna recuse, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for approval. Now, is there any discussion from the public? There.
I just. I'm Dan Halsworth. Um, I just want to appreciate what you commissioners go through, the battles you have, and that was going to be my discussion that. The people have spoken, we've had overwhelming support from Hill City. As well as the residents of Pennington County on this whole issue, the monies we've spent have been horrendous. And we don't want to lose that and cost our taxpayers more money. And what Ron had just mentioned here was very well spoken. I appreciate that this morning and I appreciate you considering the people of the county that have elected all of you. That wasting the time on this project when it was voted on and as much time as we spent last year on it. Are wasteful time all the way through for you and. Our hopes and means are all let down again because of this situation, so. With the last election that's just occurred, I think the people have spoken on that they do want good change, good common sense. And good forward decisions from our commissioners, so I thank you all for your hard work.
Thanks, Dan. Any further discussion from the public? We got one more.
Morning.
I'll let you.
Morning, my name is Carol Pitts, and obviously you have seen me here before. I was just referring back to my letter from exactly one year and one day ago. And my concern is not the road per se, that has been handled and taken care of by the commissioners, as it appears. My concern is the unintended consequences for those of us that have property right around from where that project ends at the bridge. And so I would really like to ask Tom and the commissioners to have a plan in place. One that we can respond to. For those of us that live right around the corner from the end of the project. I have land there, that's no secret, there's four, four lots. And so it's important to me to know that you have funds available and a plan in place. That I know what's gonna happen with increased traffic. So please, with that road. Tack on dollars. To make a plan of what's gonna happen in Rochford. Because Rochford itself has never been a part of this project. So please, include us, sit down, put the plan in place before the road is done. So we can hammer out what's gonna happen with the increased traffic.
Thank you, Carol.
I, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Busker?
I would hope that, that town would, when the final plans are done, would go out to Rochford. I mean, there are some people, quite a few people living there that have a major interest in what's gonna go on in that last half mile or mile there.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
In response to, is it Dan?
Yes.
To Dan's comments, um. I understand that the people around Hill City want this project to go forward. And I, I want to state this because we got to understand that there, that Pennington County is large. Um, and it doesn't revolve around just the people of Hill City. There's taxpayers all the way out the wall and past. Um, and in my particular district, I have great opposition to this project. My, my taxpayers don't want to pay for the project. They, they think it's a waste of money. And so I'm just letting you know, all due respect, I understand where you're coming from and who you've heard from, and those are people that are gonna benefit. By the paving of the road, the South Rochford Road. There's other sections in this county that are not going to benefit by it. And they have voiced their opinion screaming that they would prefer to have that money spent on saving the taxpayer money. By applying it to the eleven million dollars that were coming up short. Well, not necessarily coming up short, but probably gonna have to borrow it, I don't know. Um, to make up the difference where we're behind on Sheridan Lake Road. So I, I cannot support this project, I didn't support it the first time around. I also understand Ron's point as well, we've moved this far forward, but. You keep making mistakes over and over and over again, in my opinion, it doesn't fix anything, so that's my thought process on this. I'll be voting no.
Thank you, Mark.
Chairman?
Ms. Haddock.
Um, I respect, um, Mr. DeSanto's opinion, but I think that happens in everybody's district. Um, I'm not gonna use maybe something in East Rapid for my constituents. But I'm gonna support it because, um, East Rapid or East Pennington County needs that done. So it's just part of our job is to make sure we're taking care of all taxpayers and not just our district. We're taking care of each district. And if that district overwhelmingly wants a project, that's why we go there. That's why we spend taxpayer dollars in everybody's district to take care of different areas. We do that, like, I don't have any kids on the school, or never had kids. But I pay taxes, school taxes. So it's a give and take up here of, of, you know, what each district thinks is important and this district believes that, so. I appreciate your thoughts, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, motion on the floor is to move forward with the South Rochford Project. It's been moved and seconded.
Roll call, please.
So we're, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Busker?
Aye.
DeSanto?
No.
Farby?
I recuse myself.
Okay. Haddock?
Aye.
And McCray?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries with, uh, one excused, one no. Votes, motion carries. Thanks, Tom, next one, Sheridan Lake Road.
Thank you. Last item. Last item is extent of the Sheridan Lake Road Project. Sheridan Lake Road Project is in the ninety-five percent completion play, play, for that. Excuse me. Ninety-five percent completion stage. That means the plans have been ninety-five percent completed. What we need to rule on is whether to continue with the full-length project or shorten to less than the full length. This is based totally on funding. If we complete the full length, the cost will be approximately twenty million dollars. DOT has agreed to advance this up to an additional ten years of our SID funds, although it goes STP fund. With the STP allocation and fund advance, that would be approximately thirteen million dollars. This means we would have to cover the balance of the project with our reserve funds. Highway Department has been saving for this project for several years. Uh, currently, we have over fourteen million in reserves. We would need to use seven million of our reserves for this project. Decision for the extent of the project needs to be made to allow the consultant to finish the plans and start, finish plans and start the right-of-way acquisition. Recommendation of the Highway Department is to complete the full project, full length. This reduces the disruption of traffic in the area and better allow coordination of the construction. We're requesting the commission to approve the financing of the project as presented to allow the consultant to proceed with plan preparation and right-of-way acquisition.
So Tom, clarification, you'd be, you have seven million to put towards it for the full project? In the reserves that you guys have saved for, you'd be financing thirteen. At a zero percent interest?
That is correct. What it is, is we get STP funds from the state. And what we are doing is basically taking an advance from the state. For the next ten years, we will not get funds for ten years from the state.
And part of that money was, is that how you got some of your reserves where they were?
That is correct.
Okay.
Our reserves, our reserve balance as of today. Is, uh. Current allocation is at four point seven million. Close or minus. We get approximately eight hundred forty-six thousand a year. With, right now. And, uh, with a ten-year balance, ten-year, ten-year advance, we can get it up to thirteen million dollars.
Okay. I'll go to the board, what, Mr. Busker?
You, right now, you said you have fourteen million in the reserve?
That is correct.
What's, what's that for?
It's been saving for this project.
Okay, so why aren't we using all fourteen million for this project?
Cause I don't want to be with nothing in reserve. If we have another major catastrophe, I go with the extreme and say the seventy-two flood. We want at least three million in reserve.
Then why don't we use eleven million out of the reserve and then we wouldn't have to use all ten years, we could cut that down to. Right around the years. I hate to use all of our money for the next ten years. Uh, uh, I mean, if you've got money in the bank, you shouldn't really be borrowing money.
I, I agree, but I also know other projects that are coming up that this money could be used for also. In my five-year plan, I have about five different projects that it would be nice to use part of that money for.
Well, I guess. Don't want to bring up sore subject, but when this county turned down the wheel tax, I guess, uh, it was pretty well known that, uh, we're probably not gonna do every project we should have done. Or could do, if we'd had a wheel tax, so. Now maybe it's the time that, that we're gonna, gonna come home to roost.
Ms. Haddock, you're done, Ron?
I'm done, Randy.
You're done?
Ms. Haddock?
So, um, Tom, I thought we had five point five million in the bank.
Current total is five, is four point six, seven, nine.
Four point six, seven, nine.
By the time we would go to construction, we'd have over five point five. Cause we will get next year's allocation, it'll take at least a year to get right-of-way.
Okay, so that's, I, I thought that's what you told me yesterday, so we have five point five, you're. So we have five point five, your reserves, you want to use seven, so that's twelve point five, right?
Yes.
So basically you need about eight million.
Yes.
Is what, and the allocation would be eight hundred forty-six thousand that we would not get in stip funds per year because we'd use it for this project.
That is mostly true.
Okay.
Once we use the funds out of our STP funds, they will go to a different program. Because now what they do is allocate the federal portion plus nine percent. With this, we're getting the eighteen percent match that the state does.
So basically SB, SIB fund advanced is what it's called?
Yes, it is.
And the interest is what?
Nothing.
So I thought. So talk, talk about the repurposing, can we repurpose on this or?
This is a different fund completely, no.
Okay.
This is, this is actually savings that the state has held back for us to get these projects, this project done.
And you believe, as you have thought this out, that with the five point five. And tell me about, have you taken and done this before where you've taken the money from the stip funds? And didn't get any money per year, you used it for other projects. You were telling me we had done this before on a, on a seven year where we didn't get stip funds for seven years because we have done this before?
No, that, that was this project, we would probably not get the stip funds. We have borrowed, other counties have borrowed against their stip funds. But usually it's up to six, seven years that they allow. The state has agreed to allowing us ten years.
Okay, so we haven't done this before?
Not that I know of. I know it happened in Minnehaha while I was there.
Okay, that's what you meant by you've, you've seen it before?
I have seen it before.
And how did the budget go when you did that?
Well, it hurt, but we went, we went through it, we planned accordingly.
Well, it hurt is, is not a good answer.
Well, right now, we're not using these funds. We're not using these funds right now, this, our budget this year and next year is not figured with these funds in there. This is above and beyond what my budget is now.
So if we take your reserves, we take seven in your reserves.
Yes.
That's, and you have a total of thirteen, you have six, fourteen now? Okay, fourteen million, then we have seven million and is Rochford Road in some of that next seven million that we're going to be using?
There's one and a half million there, that's our matching funds that we'd have to be.
Out of the seven.
That is our matching funds that we have to pay to get all the money for the Rochford Road.
So your total amount for any project is fourteen million, you want to give seven million to this and about one point five to Rochford.
That is.
So that's eight point five gone already.
Yes, that is correct.
And what do you usually keep generally, or most people keep generally in the reserves and just in case?
It's usually a percentage of your budget, I would like to keep about, absolute minimum of three million. Absolute minimum.
So if, even if Rochford was two million and you had seven million, that's nine million, so you still have five million left.
I'm not doing the math in my head real fast.
So what I'm, I think I'm seeing where Buscree is going, why wouldn't you use some of that and cut down the time of the loan? Of the eight hundred forty-six?
That could be done. I, I would rather not.
Okay, just.
I, I, I'll be blunt, I would rather not because I do have a couple of projects that we do need to, that I'm trying to use state and federal monies on. That I would like to use part of the reserve for.
So how long can this discussion go on, meaning do we have time to think about this before we have to do this today? Or, or is that, is there a deadline that this?
There's no real deadline, but I would like a decision as soon as possible so I can tell the consultant to get going.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I just want to make one comment. Of observation, you've been saving for this for quite a while, so he's been setting aside X amount of dollars, so we're already making the payments. From where I look at it, and when, when you're looking at a zero percent interest, you're just continuing on what you're doing. And I, I like to get money in reserves for those emergencies that come up, and that's just my thought process. I think Mark had a question, do you have a question?
Yeah.
I recognize Mark DeSanto.
Mr. Chair, Tom, if we, if we were to do what Ron suggested, where we just use part of that and shorten the length of time. Isn't that SIP, aren't those SIP funds available for the, for the future projects that you need? If we, if we get to get those SIP funds back sooner than ten years, then those SIP funds that we start getting back could be used towards these other projects that you're looking at. Or do those proj, are those projects coming up sooner? It sounds like to me we've got about enough money that if we left three million in reserves, we'd probably reduce the amount of time we have to pay off this. Advance to seven or eight years as opposed to ten, so within the next seven years.
I have two projects that are coming up, one in twenty twenty that will need money and one in twenty twenty five, three that will need money.
Okay, thank you.
From, from what I gather from the discussion so far, Tom, is I'm thinking of. I'm thinking we probably should get a continuation motion and you come back with, with some numbers of those projects that you're talking about. So the commission can kind of decide if they want to delay those projects or some of your thoughts, and then.
These are projects that, one of them is a state project that I'm doing in conjunction with this DOT to get DOT funds to do this project. The other one is a project that I'm going to do in conjunction with Meade County, and they have already delayed it to twenty-three, just so I can have the money.
I see, I understand what you're saying, but I think maybe give these guys some of that information of what's going to, because a lot of those are matching right now, right? You have to, a lot of those are matching funds that you have, so.
Percentages.
I think they just want the information to be able to look through, and so these are matching funds we have to have. It's not making a decision whether to delay one or not, I think it's just giving a little bit more information, and I think in two weeks, I think. Even if you reach out with each commissioner one-on-one, I think that might help. I'll look to the commission and see what they want to do, Ms. Hickok.
Bottom line is, Tom, I think we want to know the projects that would be delayed, what those costs of those projects are. And then we can make a final decision because maybe Mark and his. Just example, Mark, that it might be in his district and he might think it's more important going, okay, I don't really want to do this. Or Buscree, or me, or George in their district. So I'd like the details of those projects if we could, and, and then how much, what those projects are and how much they would cost. And then I think that would make for me my final decision on, you know, how much we, you know, it's common sense that it would keep three to four million in reserves. But if we want to delay any of those other two projects.
Is there a motion?
Continue, I'll kind of make that.
She made a motion to continue, is there a second?
Second.
Motion to continue by Hickok, seconded by Buscree. George, you have a comment?
Our payment, annual payment from the state, from the feds through the state, or however you want to look at it. Is that a pretty constant number or is it very, and if so, why?
The, our federal allocation is six hundred ninety-four thousand plus or minus. Then there's a matching amount that the state adds to it.
So seven hundred thousand and that's adjusted for inflation?
No, that is the dollar amount we get.
When does it change? Does it?
It could change on a, on a federal bill, federal omnibus bill like they have.
Let me ask it this way, how long has it been seven hundred thousand for Pennington County?
It's been that way for quite a while. As long as I know.
Twenty years?
At least ten, fifteen years. They haven't changed the dollar. It was, it never changed when I was in Minnehaha County, it hasn't changed since I've been here.
So it's been constant for a number of years, six ninety-four, seven hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I suggested the continuation motion to get some information, but I think it's a good thing to go move forward and get the whole project completed. As early as possible to save money, but the motion on the floor is continuing, so.
I am going to ask a question, could we have a motion to, that we are going to do the full project just now, it's just however we're going to fund it? Is that, that is actually what I asked for, is a motion of the extent of the project, not how we're going to fund it.
I guess I would look at.
That, that way I can tell my consultant to go ahead and get, get to work.
Ron, this is your district, what do you?
Yeah, I'm not sure I'm crazy about that motion because, you know, when we're talking about money here and fourteen million and twenty million, that's to do the whole project. Maybe, you know, we should take a look at doing part of the project, half the project, and not have to borrow any money. And I, I mean, I'm not totally, I think we, I need those figures before I'm ready to say, let's do the whole thing.
Okay, motion on the floor is to continue.
Just for the record, that's all District One.
Motion on the floor is to continue. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
I'm afraid I'm going to have to make a motion to continue recess for half an hour.
I suppose you are.
I don't want to, but.
Oh.
There's a motion in second.
We could, we could do the board of adjustments, they withdrew, that ain't no big deal.
I'm okay with that.
That's toward, not till ten thirty.
Well. But it's to withdraw.
Yeah, I don't matter, we can.
In the second?
Is there a motion to?
There's a motion in a second.
There's a motion to second to continue.
All in favor?
Rescess to ten thirty, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, I think we're gonna come out of recess and start back up. Next on our agenda is board of adjustments, so I need a motion to go into board of adjustments.
All moved.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Buscree to go in board adjustments, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. PJ.
Thank you, PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Item A under Board of Adjustment is variance eighteen oh six from A and O Enterprises, David Fineman is the applicant. Requested to reduce the minimum required section line setbacks. The applicant has requested that this item be withdrawn, so staff recommends the board of adjustment move to approve the applicant's request to withdraw VA eighteen oh six.
Moved by Hickok, but Buscree's had a question first. Seconded by Buscree, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next we come to consent agenda, PJ.
Did you exit out of board of adjustments?
Motion to exit out of board of adjustments.
Moved by Santos, seconded by Hickok to adjourn Board of Adjustments, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. PJ, consent agenda.
Thank you, consent agenda. Item B is minor plat eighteen-ten and subdivision regulation variance eighteen oh three for Kerry and Sabrina Johnston. To combine three lots in order to create Lot One of Johnston's subdivision and to waive, waive planning requirements. The Planning Commission recommended denial of subdivision variance eighteen oh three to waive the requirement to construct a turnaround and approval of minor plat eighteen-ten with eleven conditions. Item C, layout plat eighteen oh eight for TDG Real Estate, Michael Gennaro is agent to create tracks one and two of Hermosa. Load MS eleven-eleven and lots one and two of Glendale number three, load MS eleven-eleven. Planning Commission recommended approval of layout plat eighteen oh eight with eighteen conditions, but that motion failed four to three. Item D, minor plat eighteen eleven, Douglas Norberg, Buckhorn Surveying is the agent to reconfigure lot lines to create track one and two of Somquist subdivision. Planning Commission recommended approval of minor plat eighteen eleven with ten conditions. The applicant is now requesting to withdraw plat eighteen eleven. Item E, subdivision regulation variance eighteen oh four for Douglas Norberg, Buckhorn Surveying is the agent to waive, to waive planning requirements in order to create track one and two of Somquist subdivision. The Planning Commission recommended approval of subdivision regulation variance eighteen oh four, but the applicant is now requesting to withdraw SV eighteen oh four. Item F, road construction within a section line right of way review sixteen oh two for Cody Shad. To review the construction of a sixteen foot wide gravel road within a section line right of way. Recommended to approve the extension of road construction within a section line right of way, see S sixteen oh two with ten conditions.
Okay, now does the staff have any that they want to pull?
Item C, please.
Item C, is anybody from the public like any of the consent items pulled? Item B?
B or D?
B.
B.
Any items from the commission? Seeing none, I'd look for a motion to approve items D, E, and F. Moved by Hickok.
Dang it.
Seconded by Buscree, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously, four votes. Item B, sir.
Good morning, Kerry Johnston. We actually have built a ample turnaround area up at the top of our driveway. We've got a forty-eight foot truss truck in there turned around and backed up. I've actually got a forty-four foot camper that I pulled in there and been able to back up and turn around in there. The, the actual turnaround down below isn't as feasible as it is up above, I believe, because if there were an emergency vehicle coming up. They would have to back up my driveway to get up to the house. So that's why we had chose to build the turnaround up at the top end of my driveway.
Now, excuse me, did you say your name for the record?
Kerry Johnston.
Kerry Johnston. PJ, could you give us any background on what the Planning Commission? Or, excuse me.
Frank Waiseth, Planner Two. So the two requests are for the, the minor plat and specifically Kerry is asking for approval of the subdivision regulations variance. To avoid including the turnaround at the bottom of the driveway. As he stated, he's installed one at the top northern end of the driveway near the house.
Correct.
Chairman?
Ms. Hickok.
So the denial was on the turnaround?
Yes, the Plan Commission recommended denial of the subdivision regulations to waive the turnaround, but has recommended approval of the, the minor plat.
So now instead of, the minor plat can be approved and now he has the turnaround, so we can approve instead of deny. The variance eighteen dash zero three, right? Because now he's made the turnaround?
We have constructed a turnaround up there, yes.
The subdivision regulations would still need to be waived technically as the turnaround is not included on the plat. But he has created a turnaround at the north of the driveway as house rather than at the base of the driveway.
Okay, so this says again that you guys approved the minor plat. But the subdivision regulation variance were basically the turnaround you denied. I guess I'm confused then.
So basically what the request is, the reason you'd still have to do the subdivision regulation variance is they don't want the turnaround noted on the plat. But subdivision regulations require that, whether the turnaround is, exists or not, they just don't want it on the plat, is that correct?
We can put it on there if we need to, but I, I mean.
You'd rather not.
Rather not have to go through that if we don't have.
So that's the request, is to actually note a turnaround on the plat.
And you're in agreement with that?
No. Right?
Not in agreement with him.
We'd like to see it on the plat.
Okay, and what was your reason for not putting it on the plat, sir?
Well, we've just been through this process for the last six months now, and we're just trying to get this approved. We can do it, I mean, it's just, you know, we already have all the plats made and everything else, and this came to us just here recently, so.
Does it cost, does it cost you more, sir?
It does cost more money, yes.
Like how much more?
That I don't know, for sure.
For a plat, to redo the plat?
To redo the plat, yes.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
PJ, or either one of you guys can answer this, maybe he can probably answer it for me. What is the reasoning behind not wanting it on the plat?
Could it be Kerry?
I suppose that question would be for Kerry.
No, yours.
Okay, for me?
Right.
So justification for not including it on the plat?
Correct. Or, no, for put, for making.
Okay, yeah, staff recommendation was to deny the variance to have it included on the plat.
Correct.
During multiple stages of the review process for the, for this layout and minor plat. Highway, Highway Department and County Fire Administrator. Both were in support of including a plat, including the turnaround on the plat, given the narrowness of the platted private road that, that this property takes access off of. Um, both were in support of including a plat, including the turnaround on the plat, given the narrowness of the platted private road that, that this property takes access off of and the topography. They were both in favor of having a dedicated area for emergency vehicles to turn around onto.
Okay. I think I get it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No.
Frank, I think I see where you guys are coming from, I understand Kerry that, that just seems to be one thing after another, but I think, I think the proper process is to have it on the plat.
Okay, this development's been there for a hundred years and obviously the developer didn't do it right in the first place. And now that I wanna change it into one lot, it seems like, to me, it should be the responsibility of the whole development versus me having to go through this stuff just to pay, take the same property and turn it into one lot instead of three.
Yeah, I understand that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
With that being said, I would lean towards that, that, I mean, that he, he's getting shouldered with the burden of taking care of something for the whole subdivision. But I also respect that they want it on the plat, I'm wondering if we could waive the fee. Get it on the plat and waive the fee, what's the fee?
Uh, I, I don't know, I have to find out with my surveyor, for sure.
Can we do that?
We can't.
No.
There, there would be no specific fee of, for this, other than the normal filing fee once the plat was, was approved, um, but this, um, so there's no specific fee for, for our office for adding the plat, the turnaround onto the plat, other than the, you know, the fee for the variance application. But cost for the surveyor between, you know, for the landowner would be, you know, added on for adding this.
Yeah, okay.
But it would, yeah, we would have no, no way to waive that.
I, my, my opinion, I, I feel for Kerry and so forth, but also if we try to vary from somewhat the recommendations of what staff does, then we have to do it for other people. And pretty soon then they don't know that those are there and then the next person gets passed on to the next person, if we get, you know, fifty years, a hundred years down the line, so I'm gonna. I take faith in, in the Planning Commission that they did their due diligence in checking this out and came up with the recommendation for the, for the denial.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Do we have any pictures of out there? I chance, besides just those plats?
Uh, no, other than the aerial, I don't have any photos of the actual site.
And Frank, where's the turnaround at?
Um, so, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong Kerry, but I believe your house has been built, uh, on the northern section.
The northern section of that lot.
So the turnaround would be at the end of the driveway near the house up here.
And, and why do you have, need to turn around up by the driveway on, on house?
Well, the, the request is to, um, typically the, the turnaround would usually be, you know, added at the end of a private road here, so it doesn't cut, cut as much into the, the private property.
Right.
But I believe, uh, in speaking with the surveyor for this plat, the topography was not as, uh, as ideal down here at the base of the road as it was near the building site, so it was much easier to install a turnaround up there.
So who else is on this property besides him to need a turnaround by his house?
Uh, this is, this is the last property on Custer Trails Road.
End of the road.
With, uh, about eight more houses, including this one down to the south toward, that lead to, uh, Taylor Ranch Road.
Okay, so show me where the road is at again, um, Frank.
Where the turnaround?
Yep, there's a private, private road Kerry?
Yes.
So there's a private road and where's the private road?
Private road ends at the bottom there where you can see the lettering.
I guess, I don't, I don't see a road in there, I see kind of a few stripes, but.
It, yeah, it's changed a lot since we've bought the property, we've logged it out and everything else, there's actually a road now, my driveway is at the end of the private road that goes up to the house on top.
And how many houses are in, in your, on your private road?
Um, there are about eight houses back in there, and we're at the very end of the private road.
Okay, and is this turnaround on your property?
It is on my property, yes, and it would be on my property if it was at the bottom too.
Okay, so what I'm saying is eight properties up there and he's gonna burn, he's gonna pay for a turnaround for eight properties.
And, and again, it's been this way for probably fifty years, you know, that, the development's an older development, so.
So can we not have these people turn around in his driveway and not have to have a turnaround for everybody, a big, for, a big turnaround at the end of his property, on his property, for eight other houses?
What?
You see what I'm saying, Lloyd?
I'll just make, take a moment of privilege, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think what, what happened here is everybody kept coming, pretty soon he's the end of the trail. Emergency vehicles need a place to turn around, it's part of the requirement, so instead of putting one down at the bottom, as he said, cause at top of the grade, he decided, he was trying to help him out and put it up further up on his property, so he made it for him, so everything would be legal. But this is just, part of the process is to actually show that it's been plotted there and he, he feels that he's expended enough money moving everything up, but the expense to have it surveyed.
Surveyed.
And put on paper is what he's protesting, I don't think he's protesting to actually having to, having to do it and so forth, he understood all that.
Right, right.
I guess my bottom line is, again, there's eight houses, so you're having one guy with eight houses and he's having to, they, they decided, well, you're the last house, we're gonna put that turnaround on yours, that's, that's pretty rotten, actually. Um, and to have to put it on a plat, I don't know if it's that important. I'm sorry, unless you plan on taking it off and not letting anybody turn around.
No.
You see what I'm saying? I don't think it's that important.
I, I'm not gonna argue with you on that, but I think it, it comes up to, to fire safety and, and stuff like that, that's the whole thing and I understand that, but. But, uh, Frank, do you have any more insight on this you can?
Um, I mean, I haven't seen the new drive, uh, turnaround that has been constructed since they have started construction on the house there, it sounds like it is of adequate size, um, primarily staff interest is to have, have it noted that it, that's dedicated for emergency vehicles, so even if it is built now. I mean, properties can change hands and, you know, it could, it could disappear if it's not dedicated on the plat, and that was primarily the, the, the concern from staff as well as, you know, that was raised by, uh, Highway and Fire, just that it be dedicated for emergency vehicles to access that if necessary.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
Okay, I, I'm gonna disagree now, because I think if, if you have eight different houses and they're gonna have an emergency, I'm pretty sure, um, they're, they're gonna get turned around and they don't have to have it on his property. I mean, if they thought it was so important in the first place, that should have happened way before this property, so I actually am gonna do a substitute that, um, we recommend approval without the turnaround and, I don't think there was a motion made.
No, there's no ma, motion at this point.
Okay, so I'm in favor of the Minor Plat subdivision, or the Minor Plat eight dash ten still, but I'm gonna have to, uh, recommend approval would be my motion on the not having to put it on the plat. And costing them money.
Motion's been moved and seconded to approve the Minor Plat and subdivision regulations variance by Kerry and Sabrina Johnston, any further discussion? My competent, comment is, I understand where you guys are coming from, but I'm also looking at the future. You may not, you may have the property all your life within, when somebody else comes over and, I think that needs to be dedicated, so I'm not gonna be voting in favor of the change, but.
Chairman.
Any further discussion, Ron, do you have any?
Well, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I think it needs to be on there, and if it's a two to two vote, it's gonna go to the next meeting and when George is here, he's gonna vote that he doesn't need to put it on there. So I'm not sure why we would have a two to two vote because it's, but, you know, I guess I'll do the right thing.
Ms. Hagcock.
Chairman, um, I agree with what you're saying, but I've also been in a lot of different areas where I see these turnarounds and they're just used up property. Because I, when, when you already have eight houses there, don't get me wrong, if you're gonna start and that's gonna be the turnaround, even then I've seen it where it's, people are like, why you gotta turn around over there? We're like, I don't know, because the property has enough area for those emergency vehicles already, don't get me wrong, if this was a close subdivision, heck no, you know, you need that turnaround, but you, you're talking some pretty big areas where people can get in and out. That's, that's why, um, I don't change kinda back and forth, I kinda look at each situation and you've got enough room for those vehicles to get around and those, how, how big are the, the lots Kerry?
Um, they're gonna be, it'll be two acres as a whole, basically, with the three lots together.
And that's what I'm talking about, like if you're talking about those quarter acre lots or half acre lots, there's, it's a lot bigger, you know, area to try to get some emergency vehicles in and out, but if you got two acre to five acre or ten acre lots, you got area for people not to have to dedicate turnarounds at that point.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve it. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Two to two. Motion fails. As they get continued on to the, it continues, motion continues to the next meeting.
Right, and was that only for the sub regs or was that for the preliminary and sub regs, the motion?
Uh, I believe that motion was just for the subdivision regulation variance.
Yeah.
Um, this all item also includes the Minor Plat eighteen ten, um, approval is recommended of that with eleven conditions.
That was approved.
Okay, did you approve that as well, as your motion?
In her motion.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
You know, just second.
No, I, we, we were just discussing the turnaround and platting it.
The variance needs four votes, correct?
Not this one, this isn't a board adjustment.
Okay.
So it fails, so.
She had it in her motion, she did specifically say.
Did she?
That's right, it's not a board adjustment, okay.
Deb did.
You wanna do it separate, so that they can move forward with the?
So the other parts separate, got?
When she said her motion, she specifically said and approve Minor Plat PL.
Oh, okay.
She included it with her motion, but I don't know.
Do we, well, it's gonna continue anyway, so I mean.
Yeah.
So that was all in the motion and we didn't separate it?
Hers was one big motion.
One big motion.
Deborah was.
And that, and so that, yeah.
But Chairman, that, that failed, but, um, isn't it like two to two and it fails and it goes back to the original motion? Because it failed? Why, why are we gonna wait for one other person?
You were the reg.
No, what I'm saying is, you know, you have the, the commission here and if one's missing, it's not a regular variance, so doesn't it fail and then he doesn't get his variance?
I don't think so, I think a two-two.
It's failed.
Is, is a continuance.
Two to two is continuance.
What if he never shows up?
Then one, somebody's gonna have to change.
Point another, I mean, he's gonna show up eventually, I don't think.
Eventually, eventually, wow, okay, that's unfortunate, okay, I'll, I'll be quiet, I just thought, I thought it, just from before that once we did two to two, failed and then it went back to the denial.
Yeah, if we had another motion on the floor, I'd go back to the original motion, but there was only one motion, so two to two, my understanding when it's a two to two.
Okay, Chairman, Kerry, I'm gonna flip so you can move forward and keep your turnaround and, if, if that's okay. Um, I, I shouldn't ask you permission, but, um, I knew, I think you need to move forward on your project, so, okay, so.
Okay, so now.
So are you withdrawing your motion?
No, we already voted on, voted on it, so.
Rescind or whatever, can't I?
You can.
I'll rescind and.
Seconder okay with the rescind?
Seconder's okay with rescission, rescinding.
Jesus, making this confusing here.
I know, but we got, we gotta help the people.
Yeah, so, motion maker and seconder rescinded.
Okay.
The motion, and so we go back to the original recommendation from the Planning Commission, which would be approval of the other part, but denial of that vari, variance, right Frank?
That's correct, those recommendations are from the Planning Commission.
All right, that'd be my motion.
Second.
Seconded by Ron, made by Hagcock, seconded by Ron, Busker, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
One no from DeSanto, sorry Kerry. The rest that we got?
We tried Kerry, but.
Thanks, sir.
Next we come to item C.
Good morning, Cassie Bolston, Assistant Planning Director, item C, um, this is a layout plat, um, and the reason I pulled this off of consent, um, is Mr. Gennaro, um, the applicant, uh, landowner is not here today, but he requested that I pull this off of consent. Um, so that you guys could have some discussion about this, because this item, um, at the Planning Commission, they actually made a motion to approve this layout plat, but that motion actually failed on a four to three vote. Um, so he just requested that I present this to you guys so that you guys can have some discussion about this and, and kinda see what your thoughts were on it. So, um, just to give you guys an idea, this is currently plotted as two separate, um, loads. Um, what this applicant is proposing to do is break these two loads into four lots, um, using the existing platted Oak Meadows Road. Um, currently, one load, um, is this portion, one load is this.
Sorry, Chairman, what's load?
Oh, it's, sorry, they're mining claims, they're lots, basically, essentially, but they're separated, they're both separated by the road.
Like, okay, I'm not understanding.
So basically what he's trying to do is just, um, separate these into four lots, two on the north side of the road and two on the southern side of the road. Um, so this is what he's proposing to do, um, there would be a tract on this side of the road, a tract on the north side of the road, a lot and another lot is basically what he's proposing to do. Um, the lots would be between one point eight four and three point two eight acres. Um, when we routed this through the interdepartmental review process, there was a few things that just need to be corrected, minor things about this plat, um, the county highway department wants to see a shared approach, um, for the lots to try to limit the number of accesses off of Oak Meadow Road. Um, and then, um, the Forest Service did, um, make a statement about the existing road that goes through, um, a few of these properties, um, as it appears on the plat, that it might go onto Forest Service land, um, Mr. Gennaro states it does not, so that would just be a minor thing with the surveyor to just verify that. Um, so staff had recommended approval of this plat with eighteen conditions, like I said, the Planning Commission failed this on a four to three vote. Um, so, like I said, Mr. Gennaro requested that you guys have some discussion about this for your thoughts.
Just is the applicant here?
He is not here today.
Okay, Mark, did you?
Could you expand on why, um, the Planning Commission, what were their thoughts on denying this?
Um, the Planning Commission's biggest concern on this is he would have to rezone these to, um, low density residential district, um, the Planning Commission was concerned, um, with adding more density in this area. Um, they were concerned that there is, um, mostly just large lots out here, um, the closest, um, some of these would have to be rezoned to suburban residential, most of them would have to be zoned to suburban residential. Um, so they were concerned that there's only just a little tiny pocket of suburban residential right in this area, the rest of it is larger lots, they, their biggest concern was the increased density.
But their lot sizes are, would be, let me look at this.
One point nine acres.
Yeah, one point nine each.
Two point three acres.
Yep, the biggest one would be three point two eight acres.
And if there was more suburban in there, it'd make a difference, but there's not.
Okay, thanks, Gels, look for any comments or?
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by DeSanto?
I'll second for discussion, but.
Seconded by Hagcock for discussion.
Vote for it, but. Okay.
Discussion.
The bottom line is, is if there was more suburban residential, it'd be different out there, but, um, those are pretty small lot sizes, you got low density goes, what's the lowest low density goes down to, Ms. Cass?
About three acres.
And the smallest of this, or the largest of this is two point?
Three point two eight, so one of them would meet the low density residential requirement, the other three would be suburban residential.
Mr. Gennaro did also request in a phone conversation that I had with him yesterday, um, he did want me to let you guys know that he is amendable, um, to changing this plat, um, to plaid it into two lots, um, one lot on the northern side of the road and one lot on the southern side of the road. Um, the only reason he was doing it this way is to try to somewhat keep the integrity of the mining claims intact, um, rather than combine the mining claims, he. The way he reiterated it to me is that separating, um, by the road, um, to him kind of kept some of the historical value of the mining claims versus just getting rid of them entirely and combining them. That's why he was proposing before.
And I think i- if he could do that, then I would be more in favor of that, I think to to start changing the integrity of the area down to suburban right now. Um, I I think it'd be better if he did combine the two lots, I'd be more in favor of that, but I second for discussion, just in case we had something we missed, but.
Rescind your motion then?
You rescind your second?
Yes.
For your second, right, I rescind my motion. And we can, if he's in agreement with with that, then I'm better, I'm fine with that too. And then it'll ma- it, all of the properties will be over three acres at that point in time anyway.
Uh, correct, yep, they'll still have to be rezoned, but they should be able to be rezoned to low density.
We're we're looking at a motion to deny them, right? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Hickock to to follow the planning commission's recommendation, which was to deny, right?
Yes, their motion failed.
And for the discussion, Mr. DeSanto.
And you'll pass that on to him that to to come back with to us with.
I will let him know.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying hi. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That brings us out of the consent agenda.
Item D is the our next item on the regular, oh, where are we going here? Uh, minor plat eighteen eleven for Douglas Norberg Buckhern, serving as the agent to reconfigure lot lines to create tract one and two of Sumquist. Let me go, let me change that, yeah. Uh, the applicant, the planning commission recommended approval of minor plat eighteen eleven with ten conditions, the applicant, uh. Wait a second.
G, request for fund of.
I I apologize, sorry. On February fourteen, two thousand seventeen, there was an ordinance violation, uh, opened on discovery of a twelve by twelve cabin on a property. The applicant is working with the planning department to get a conditional use permit to allow the cabin on the subject property. Because the cabin was put there prior uh, to the staff knowing about it and the building permit. The applicant was uh, charged extra, the an extra eight hundred dollars for the conditional use permit and the applicant is requesting a waiver of that. Of the eight hundred dollars.
Is Randy here? And we got your letter, Randy, but you want to give us a little more of a background?
My name's Randy Wordsfeld, um, this cabinet originally, why I built it twelve by twelve was. If my understanding was it wouldn't require a building permit. So that's why I started down this road at this size, because I mean, that's extremely small for a cabin. But I just didn't want to deal with the building permit, so I wasn't trying to skate anything, I just knew what size I could do it without a permit. Well, then it was brought to my attention that that only the one hundred and forty-four square foot only applies if you don't put anything in the ground, which I didn't know that. So on the low side of the cabin, because the terrain is real steep, I put posts down in cement to hold that side up. So then that required a building permit, well then, at that point is when they brought to my attention that I also needed the. Conditional use permit. And. I guess where I'm kind of coming from, this is no bigger than probably most people's storage sheds. And there's no utilities up there, all my family uses it for is camping, you know, ten ten times out of the year, maybe, not even that. I mean, there's no hookups, no nothing, it's very primitive, it just seems like eight hundred dollars is a lot for. In comparison to what it actually is, because like if someone did this and built a four thousand square foot place, it would be the same. This is only a hundred and forty-four square feet, I mean, we could draw it out here, it's tiny.
So Randy, how did you come across to finally figure figuring out you needed all the variances and permits, did you come in and? Or was it somebody?
No, the tax people were out there looking at the land to rezone it or something. So then they let the planning commission know that that cabin was out there. And then the planning commission contacted me that I was in violation.
Okay. PJ.
Uh, just one point of clarification, the conditional use permit is to allow a tw- uh, a. Living space less than twenty by twenty, so you're allowed in the county to have living space under twenty by twenty with a conditional use permit. So that's kind of, that's what the request for the conditional use permit is. Kind of like what you do with single wide mobile homes, similar to that.
And I just had no knowledge of that because I didn't do the building permit and. But my reasoning for not doing.
I, Randy, I I'm sure this commission probably understands that we've all, that sticks in our heads, one hundred and forty-four square feet. For sheds and so forth, we know we don't need a building permit, I mean, we do a pretty good job of advertising that, so I understand where you come with.
If I had a had a further understanding of that, then I would have came in and got the building permit and then they would have made me aware of this other permit, the conditional use permit. I just, I guess what I'm trying to present is my intentions were good, I didn't, I wasn't trying to skate nothing.
Yeah.
You know, I wanted to do it right, but.
So chairman.
Has the permits been applied and paid for now?
It's been paid for, but uh, I actually have to go before the planning commission on Monday to get it, but it's been paid for.
I'd make a motion to waive the penalty fees.
I'll second it.
Talk now?
Sure. Yeah, I think here's the bottom line, you paid the fees, you thought twelve by twelve, and I know a lot of people think that. And some people just do it because they can. But um, to me, you sound pretty genuine about what you're what you're saying and you have paid all the fees and. You thought the twelve by twelve and you didn't know, and it doesn't say twelve by twelve living space in there, so. Um, I understand, how about that?
So the motion of the floor on the floor is to waive the penalty fees, not the the application fees. Okay, I just wanted to be clear. Any further discussion?
Oh, I always have discussions on these. I uh, was driving down Central Boulevard one day and I thought the speed limit was thirty, but it's twenty-five. It cost me a hundred and five dollars because I didn't know what the law was. And guess what? I paid a hundred and five dollars.
Chairman. Um, Ron, I totally understand, but he thought and and he looked at the rules twelve by twelve and and.
I understand that.
So I I guess that's why I'm saying that is that he looked at the rules and then that's where he went.
Okay, motion on the floor is to waive just the penalty. All in favor waiving the penalty fees indicate by saying hi. Opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you.
Point well taken from Ron, huh?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We are, we're listening.
Now I wasn't happy either.
Okay.
We're on H, right, so I don't read the wrong one? Okay, item H is uh, first reading in public hearing of major plan unit development amendment eighteen oh one for deal for cabins LLC. Uh, the applicant has requested that this be continued to the June nineteenth board of commissioners meeting as he's not able to be present today.
So move.
Moved by Ron, seconded by. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying hi. Opposed, motion carries. Item I.
Item I is preliminary plat eighteen oh nine and subdivision regulation variance eighteen oh two for Eric and Heidi Hendrickson, Spurlock Consulting as the agent. To create lots one through ten of Boomgrass subdivision and to waive planning requirements. Um, the agent and the landowner are in the audience today as I believe also some of the concerned neighbors, there were a couple additional. Uh, items that were sent to the uh, board of commissioners, I believe, two emails from a Mr. Crawford and then also. Um, a petition signed by appears to be some of the neighboring landowners dated June third, just want to make sure the commissioners have received those.
Chairman. Just a clarification to not improve the section lines, so. So planning commission recommend approval of subdivision regu- regulations, variance eighteen dash zero to waive some middle of. Under one and two. And then, but not in denial of eighteen dash zero nine, can you can you kind of explain what all that means?
Sure, with the planning requirements, you're required to improve the section line right away and submit engineered road construction plans. So the planning commission was okay with that. Um, but they weren't okay with the number and size of lots in the preliminary plat that was proposed.
Number and size?
Correct. So that's why they uh, denied the plat, but there's we're still in favor of if. The plat was ever to change, they would still be okay with the sub reg request, so the applicant would have to come back with it.
So there's, they're in a. Okay, so they denied this whole thing because of the number and the size, that's the bottom line.
Essentially, yeah, they they. And other people may have gotten other things out of the meeting that were there, but it was, it seemed to be the concern is the. I haven't gone through and explained anything yet of what this is about, but um, the concern is mainly about the smaller lots up to the north.
Okay, and how many lots in this subdivision already and what's the size of the lots?
How many right now?
Yeah.
Right now, the property is one, one property over two hundred acres.
Okay.
And what they're looking to do is to subdivide the property into ten lots. A number of those lots are actually fixing existing violations for have for the number of single family residents that it currently exist on the property.
How many is there on the single family, how many?
Four, at least. Those are the one, those are these right here.
The three acre are to repair or to fix.
Yeah, it's gonna bring up, yeah, these are, this part is to bring a property in the compliance, correct?
Okay, so you already have and they want ten acre, they want ten lots, there's already four lots already. Or they're bringing in compliance for other residences and what are the size of those lots?
Yep, so the properties, the subject properties that have the current residences on them, so they're gonna create lots around them.
Right.
Make sure that everything meets that backs, our lot five, which is gonna be over three acres. Lot six, uh, which is gonna be a little over three point three acres.
Okay.
And lot seven, which is gonna be about fifty eight point eight acres.
Fifty point eight?
Fifty eight point eight, yeah, and there's additional buildings on some other lots, but.
So there was four, wasn't there? There's a three acre, a three point three and a fifty eight point eight.
Five, two, three, I'm thinking of a barn, so, and then the one down to the bottom right, but I can't find that one, right, four, five. Four, five, six and seven, lot four, five, six.
What's four then?
So lot four is going to be three acres with a house, a barn, a coop, um, and a flood plain on the property, I'm sorry.
And basically, they want a total of ten three acre, or what? So you have four, six more with three acre lots, is it low density, is that what they're wanting?
So the next item on the agenda is a request for rezone.
What was that rezone for?
To bring it into compliance and request the appropriate zoning for those lots, correct?
So it's already been being done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's already going, it's already been three acres, three acres, I mean, people have been living out there how long with three acre basically lots?
Even before I came on, I know the previous director was work was working with the landowners to try and bring the property into compliance. Nothing ever really happened with it, and then there's a new buyer came in looking to um, subdivide the property and now. They're coming out to bring the property into compliance.
So the old owner was doing this already without?
Still the same owner.
And is there any penalties for that?
They've paid everything, yeah.
Mr. Chair. Mr. DeSanto. Um, joining this property, is there already subdivision platted for less than ten acres? Next to.
Subdivision.
Next to these property lines, is there a, they're platted lots that are less than ten acres?
I don't believe so, but I do know that the um, agent does have his have some maps that he'd like to. To uh, show the commission and discuss some of, I believe, the density in the area.
Who's the agent?
Just one point to show you, this is the current. Yeah, just uh, real quick, what you're looking at right now is the current zoning. The subject property is outlined in the red and the orange, so the light green is general agriculture with a forty acre minimum, the dark green is limited agriculture with a ten acre minimum. And the yellow is low density residential with three acres. This is current zoning. Future land use shows uh, higher density across the street, low density residential. And uh, breaking down the general agriculture in the area into limited agriculture. So I just wondered before the agent comes up, I just want to let you know what the future land use currently says.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. You have one more.
So it's my understanding, PJ, that future zoning is already set for expansion.
Yes, mainly across the street, correct? Well, not across the street, I'm sorry, just north of the property line, I apologize, yeah.
Okay, you have more or should we?
No, I'm just gonna stay up here for him.
Keep that.
Yo, my name's Kale McNimbo, I own Spurlock Consulting, eight twenty-one Columbus, and I represent the applicant in this matter, the Hendricksons. Um, just as a little bit of background, they bought the property in twenty twelve. Um, he bought a property that had the four houses on it as as described. Um, the intention of trying to get some of these lots and let's see if I can, can I just a pen, PJ?
Yep, just press the color.
How do I advance to these things?
Uh, arrows. But it's PowerPoint, so I don't.
So maybe I can just use the clicker, as PJ's indicated, we see these lots in this location. The intention of those is to break each of those houses into a three acre lot. Um, it's these three are three, three lots right here, there would be three acre lots and that was the. That was kind of the discussion item that that we're bringing forward to you, trying to rezone not only the. Existing houses under their own lot, but create three additional lots along the north property line. Um, how do I get? Those uh, those ones.
One's gonna be fifty acres.
Okay. Alright, thanks for indulging me, what you see um, in green again is the limited agriculture right across the road. Um, you see limited ag, this in the yellow, everything in yellow is LDR. So just north of the property, this again is our property and our proposed zoning, we'd like to create this LDR. And these two lots is limited ag, the rest of this property that we're talking about stays general ag. Uh, the lot sizes are correct for general ags, there's no request there. What we have is limited ag across the road with several non-conforming lots, that's a five acre lot and a five acre lot in limited ag. This is about the three acre lot, zone LDR, there again, you're looking at two and a half acres here, um, this is kind of some of the surrounding. That's the existing zone, now this is, this is the uh, the county's planners came up with the future land use as PJ indicated. This can give you a better idea of the kind of zoning we're looking at relative to what's planned coming forward. You see this large swath of yellow kind of following the highway. Over here, this is all, this is computer, so we're all in low density on this side. The property immediately north is also scheduled for low density residential. And we're asking for this piece as low density residential as well. Um, you know, and the logic behind the, you know, the long range planners is that you get your higher density near the road. And you start gradually grading out into a lower density, ultimately landing in general ag, so the the concept is really good and it's kind of the one that's followed routinely. In long range planning. So the questions become. Hold another one. So there here again is the existing zoning and what we're asking for. We've got a lot on each side of the creek, this line right here would represent the creek. So we have lot eight, which lies entirely on the east side of the creek. And then we have a lot over here, which lies on the other side of the creek, this lot gains access to an easement right here. And this is a section line, so. These, this lot has access on the section line, this lot has access on an easement that's on this line. And this lot on the west side of the creek also has access on an easement that's gonna happen here. Along this northern property line. You have lot eight, which again lies entirely on the east side of the creek. And it takes access through a sixty-six foot wide section line right away, happens right there. So it's, I know there's an irrigation ditch and there's been some discussion from the uh, the other individuals that are here about the irrigation ditch and how it exists. Um, on that north property line for a portion of that north property line, it's a, I believe it's an eighteen inch pipe. So if you think about that, if it's less than two. So if you think about that, if it's less than two foot in diameter, we still have sixty-four feet to work with to gain access to that lot. Um so what we're coming forward to you really asking for is the opportunity to plant these three lots into LDR and connect what's gonna be in future LDR to the north, zoned, or future land use would be LDR, whether it's used that way or not, I I can't tell, but are ultimately gonna be used that way, but to connect that LDR with this LDR and create limited ag over here to match the limited ag that you see in the shrouding air, then again leaving these tracks general ag. Um so it's been an ongoing problem. I know that Dan before had tried to solve this issue and and really what we we're coming forward with is we'd like an opportunity or at least part of this process is to solve the zoning issues that we have in this nest of existing buildings. So if you think about well, adding additional density, really, there's already four here right now. So the reason that's kind of a wash, the buildings are already there. We're talking about these three, uh basically three houses there. So that if you're talking about additional increase in density, it's relative to those three lots.
Okay, Kayla, so I I know, see, we got, I see your hand, I see that we have people wanna talk. On your recommendation, what is your recommendation to to what's up here?
Yeah, so um of course, I didn't have these exhibits at the planning commission. Um and and we did get denied at the planning commission, and I think it was sort of a lack of 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 us uh having brought forward this information to the planning commission, and that's why it got denied. Uh I'd request, if we could uh go in accordance with the staff recommendation to approve uh both the subdivision plan and the following rezone.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Stack, you're looking, you're looking for the staff recommendations of approval?
Uh yes, sir.
Okay, now I'll take comment from other people, not it's, how many more people we have that wanna speak on this? Okay, you, four? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, my name is Florence Thompson, and I live across the road uh in the um Hook J subdivision. Which are the green area there. Uh I have a question before we go any further with this. Um has lot eight changed since the plat that we have? The plat that we have shows lot eight on both sides of Rapid Creek.
No, so this line.
This is lot eight.
Nine, that's lot eight. Lot eight, that line.
Karen, the print I had looked like an eight, I guess, so what happened?
No, that's lot nine. Lot eight's always been on the east side of the creek, it follows the center line of the creek, just like you see it.
I'm taking your word for it, I just, I just, apparently the copy I had, it looked like an eight. We all looked at it, we thought it was an eight, so.
Okay.
So that's one of those things, never mind. Okay.
Go ahead Florence.
I'd like to clarify something before we go any further. Um the sec- the little uh lots over there across the road that are five acres, those are like mine, one of mine, it's lot A. And that was subdivided on the recommendation of an attorney or somebody who told me that we needed that for financing our home. And so that's what that is. It isn't a separate part of the property. It's lot A of lot whatever, so. And I'm pretty sure that's what the other one is too. Okay, I'll read through the letter that we sent. The undersigned residents of the area agree with the recommendations of the planning commission to deny the request for rezoning as it is currently proposed to be platted. Everyone agrees that the Hendricksons are wonderful neighbors and that they have a right to subdivide their property. As usual, the devil's in the details. We have no objections to drawing three acre lots to accommodate existing houses on the Hendrickson Ranch. There are currently a few randomly placed smaller lots in the local area, all of which were drawn to enclose existing old ranch structures, and that was one of the arguments that the developer gave us, uh Mister Howie, that there were already uh small acreages all around, but they weren't, when in looking into it, they they're all older structures that were being accommodated in that way. The Hook J subdivision, uh which, oh, one of the planning commissioners, oh my, I'll bring it over. We do however object to the small size of some of the lots on the open land of only three acres, lots one, two and three. One of the planning commissioners stated in the hearing that our neighborhood would be more consistent with ten acre lots. The Hook J subdivision across Antelope Creek Road consists of nine lots, which range in size from twenty-two point oh two acres to fourteen point oh nine acres and is zoned limited agriculture. Other surrounding neighbors are zoned agriculture. Um in regards to some of these future plans for this zoning, I assume this refers to the comprehensive plan that's coming in, which has not been approved yet and which they're still taking comments on, and we do have some comments about that area there. Um in addition, um that then I talked about lot eight because we thought lot eight was on both sides of the creek. Okay, so you can skip that part. Uh in regards to um the Lone Tree Ditch Company, uh in regards to lot eight continuing to be used as an irrigated hayfield and lot seven being developed as an irrigated hayfield, never previously irrigated, there are many issues which have not been addressed. And I don't know that this has to do with zoning, but it certainly had to do with future land use, uh people who would plan to buy these places or to sell them, uh to need to know what the implications are. Um number one, the Lone Tree Ditch Company is the governing entity in matters of irrigation in the land in question. Number two, water rights may be rescinded on land designated as residential instead of agricultural and are maybe declined on land not previously irrigated. Easements for a pipeline along another lot or lots to irrigate lot seven is very problematic. If you wanna look at where lot seven is, lot seven is the one uh farthest to the southeast. So they will run um water through uh one of the other lots to uh get to that. Number four, the Hendrickson property has no access to the Lone Tree Ditch Pipeline, so water would have to be taken from a ditch into a new headgate structure and then into a new pipeline to traverse to lot seven. Now, even though lot eight is all on one side of the creek, there's still problems with accessibility to lot eight. Lot eight has no access to Antelope Creek Road. The north side of lot eight is an irrigation headgate and and pipeline structure. And that would limit access there. And also, um that is a right of way, but it is, it right now is just a path in pasture. So uh it is not um a good access for that lot. Um if if lot eight, oh oh I should say this. Um in meeting with the proposed buyer and sub divider of the property, Gordon Howie, he explained that his son, Shadrack Howie, intends to buy both lot eight and lot one. Do you wanna locate those two? Lot, they're both on the north side.
We got it, got him.
Okay. He ta- he intends to buy both of those. He plans to use lot one to access lot eight. He plans to use most of lot eight as a hayfield, which is its current use, and I already explained, there may be problems with the water. If lot one is to provide permanent access to lot eight, it seems to me that in good practice, good good zoning, uh that lot eight, they should be combined into one lot. So that lot eight could not, uh lot one could not be sold separately and leaving lot eight cut off from access to the to the road. So and and that would involve uh by building another road, I would suppose, if that's that's the way that goes through.
Florence, I got, I just got one question.
Yes.
Just like I did with with uh Kayla.
Mm-hmm.
Kayla's thinking of, his recommendation would be for the approval of the staff recommendations. And you are, I think what I'm hearing is that you're you guys are in favor of what the planning commission recommended, right?
They recommended denial of this rezoning.
Well, they re- the planning commission has a recommendation to approve the subdivision regulations and and to waive the submittal, uh to form percolation tests and provide soil profile information, but part two is to not to uh improve section lines located on southern property lines of proposed lot seven. Seven and the northern property lines of proposed lots one, eight and nine of the Bogus subdivision and denial of the preliminary plat of eighteen oh nine, that's what the planning.
We're we're addressing the plat part. I I'm frankly, I don't understand all of that other stuff. I'm I'm not sure what road they're talking about.
But I'm asking you, are you in favor of that that recommendation from the planning commission? Cause apparently the planning commission changed their recommendations compared to what staff was to conform to some of the stuff that you guys were looking for.
I'm I'm afraid you lost me on that one. We uh our understanding was that they denied the rezoning as it was proposed for that plat. That's the second part. That they they recommended denial, and so we agree with that. We support that denial. The rest of the stuff, um I'm not sure if if we can have a little more explanation of what that is. Uh I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about with the uh the road and et cetera.
I'll ask Cal, we can.
Yeah.
Can you shed some light on this Cal?
Yeah, you bet. So um when we went to the planning commission, um so it was basically the plat and the variance came through at the on the same motion. What they did was they recommended approving the variance not to construct the section line highway up on that north property line.
Okay.
But they denied the plat. Um and then the second was the rezoned, since the plat got denied, they denied the rezone as well. This is that section line with irrigation ditch we were all discussing on the north property line. That's the one that's got the 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 pipe in it. And it's got this, it's got the irrigation pipe in it, but it is sixty-six foot wide. And it's dedicated, or it's statutory section line highway right now.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, Florence, yeah, come on, sure.
Okay, thank you. So I'm Corinne West, and um my husband and I own the property di- directly across the road of from the Hendricksons in Hook J subdivision. And basically, just to kind of summarize this, I mean, like like the letter said, all of us agree Hendricksons are great neighbors. We don't disagree that they have right to subdivide their property. But our Hook J subdivision was all subdivided into larger properties, I think it was fourteen to twenty-two acres. And that's kind of what we would like to see stay in the area. We're, I think, because we think they're great neighbors, because we wanna be cooperative with this. We're all said, okay, we're fine with it subdividing into the the current properties, the other houses that are on his place he currently uses as rentals, and I'm assuming that that's why he wants to subdivide those into the three acre pieces to, you know, make them their own properties. And I see, I mean, I see the sense in that, but um the rest of us all really would like to keep the subdivision area in the larger limited ag, or I guess in the future, that's just all gonna be ag. They said not, but most of us all have hayfields, most of us all have, you know, chickens, a couple horses, this kind of thing. It's pretty much still an ag area out there. And even though it looked like in the proposed stuff that maybe some of that they said north is gonna be proposed to be um into higher density residential, um the owner of that poor property is actually signed on this um as not being in favor of, you know, making it a lower density um residential area. So, I mean, we would just like you to really consider the whole area in in the um you know, basically, in that whole half of Antelope Creek is al- almost all the larger fourteen to twenty-two acres. And we would like, uh you know, don't have an argument with him subdividing it, but would like to keep it in those size ranges. Kinda keep that same feel of the area, the little bit more ranchettes instead of, you know, little tiny parcels.
But you're okay with how they, he's got those houses down, he needs to get them into?
He needs, yeah, those need to get, and so.
They're gonna be three acres, three acres, three acres.
Yeah, and they are, and that's just the way they are because they're close, all those houses are close. There's really no way I don't, I would see that you could make those. You know, there're gonna be a couple small ones there.
Okay.
But they've kind of been a part of that whole existing ranch that he's had for quite some time. So, but I wouldn't, I mean, I would like, I would not like to see it become a whole bunch of little tiny three acre things. That doesn't really go with the feel of the whole rest of the area, I think.
Okay.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman.
We got one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, sister, I didn't, I didn't see you, I was looking down, how are you?
My name's Jackie Miller, I live out in the same area, um I think I'm south of Eric, but um actually just compare with everything they've already brought up, and if if you could bring that one picture back up to show where he's trying to get those into compliance with the lot, I don't know where that one is, but if you take a look at that, you can see why, I mean, it's obvious, and I don't think those are three acre lots anyway, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think there's three acres on every one of those, am I, or there are. Okay, all right, well, and like Corinne just said, it doesn't really fit, that's kind of just to get that area into compliance. But if you look at the rest of the acreage out there, it's hayland and chickens and horses, and so, yeah, that's other than that is it for what they said, for sure, same, you know, we have the same, definitely on the same side. And you know, not trying to make this an issue, but it just does not fit in that area of those three acre lots, so.
Miss Jackie, can I ask her a question?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, chairman. So, are you across the road too? Are you below?
Across the road.
So all all you guys are across the road, but you keep saying he's a great neighbor, but um he built all this and did all this with. He bought it this way?
Yeah, yeah, it was existing, and that's the whole idea, is that they're trying to bring that.
Like, he's had this for a while, and he's been letting this go on, and he hasn't, he hasn't separated. So there's, so there's four on that lot that are three acres already. There's a vacant lot that they wanna do three acres and it's special flood hazard. There's a vacant lot and that would be let's see, lot one is vacant of any structures, it's flood hazard. Uh lot two is three acres, vacant of any structures. That's a three acre lot, and that is flood hazard. You have lot four is three acres, and that's special flood hazard. And then lot five is special flood hazard, three acres, then you have lot six with existing house and two carports. So some of this has a few things on it, but it's flood hazard. And then lot seven has an existing house shop, hoop building. Lot eight is vacant of any structures, special flood hazard. Lot nine is vacant of any structures, special flood hazard, and lot ten is special flood hazard. I'll just tell you, um they can separate those lots, but that's gonna with special flood hazard on there, it's gonna be hard to build anything on it. Make sense?
Well, that those are the existing houses. They're just carving it up like.
No, she just went through all ten.
Okay, all right. Remember, they wanted these additional lots that you guys were talking about? So you understand if they they can make a subdivision in a special flood hazard, but that's gonna be a a heck of a time. And and to get it through that, they have to go through, if I'm correct PJ, a lot of the um FEMA stuff and different things before that it's even plotted.
Yeah, there's a pi- this is a picture of the entire lot as it is now, and the blue line is the flood hazard area with the application that they're submitted, they were required actually to find the base flood elevation and do a whole study on this, so we have a lot more data about the base flood elevation now. Um just one thing to remember, with the creation of ten lots, and I know they have four houses on it.
Yes.
Each individual lot can have an individual residence on it.
Yes.
And if you get the proper permits to build in the flood, in the in the special flood hazard area, it is possible, it is a few extra steps.
Yeah, so um to divide it is fine in one sense, but the other is to um build stuff in special flood hazard might be a little bit more. I I don't know if I'm okay with that, how about that?
Okay, you done? Are you still okay?
Yeah, but I I wanted people to understand that's flood hazard when we're approving that.
Okay, now Florence, I'm trying to give everybody a chance to speak before we go.
I neglected to say something.
What?
I neglected to say that we had sixteen property owners, representing sixteen properties, signed this letter.
Yeah.
And that also we've had input from an additional one, so that makes seventeen property owners that are all adjacent, you know, or close by or in in that same zoning area. I have a question about lot um seven, just on general purposes. I don't wanna throw monkey wrench in it, but that, it, look at the shape of that thing, it's on Antelope Creek Road uh for the house, and then it goes way out into the, and and you're gonna keep an any designation on that? I mean, it it seems, it seems just odd, so anyway, just something to consider.
Okay, thanks Florence. I think the information that's been presented gives us two options. Number one, I'll, I'll, I'll go back to you. I'm just gonna announce the options that are available. The recommendation that staff had, which was for approval. And then we have the recommendation that was from the planning commission, which was to improve apart, in part, and deny in part, and so forth. I just wanted to lay that on the table as, as we go forward and discuss from the commission. Any comment, other comments from the commission, Mr. DeSanto?
Um, actually, I believe that Kale had another-
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I know that, uh, let me get out of here.
I'll do it, you talk.
So, you know, there's discussion on the, the sixteen individuals who signed the petition. I did prepare an exhibit that shows you their proximity to this property, um, just for reference.
Is that what you need? You got two files?
Oh, I got, I got the other one.
You got two files, yeah, so. The new ones on the right, old ones on the left.
I can help you point those out.
No, they're right there, and maybe you want to indicate which one of those people they are.
Certainly, certainly.
Everything's shown in red.
Can you, how, where's the pointer?
There's the pointer.
There's the pointer. Can you make it bigger so it's-
No, that's-
So, I don't have points as well.
Circle is two miles.
The first one is Florence Thompson. I'm right here, right there. And that little five acre lot is my lot A. Um, Sowards, right here. Um, let's see. Oh, boy, I'm having trouble reading this one. Uh, I'll go down to this one, Radke's, right here.
That's a two and a half acre lot.
That is to accom- accommodate an existing ranch house. Um, Glenn Kilburg, he's on the other side of the Caputa Loop over here. Let's see, where's the Loop Road?
Um, that's-
It'd be right there. He's over here.
Yep.
Um-
That's a two and a half acre parcel.
Linda Radke, or, um, oh, Linda Wright Kilburg, that's his wife, but I didn't count them twice, I don't think. Uh, Bryce Sowards is over on this side. Um, Jackie Miller and Duane Miller are down here, right there. No, no, wait. Yeah, where's the creek? Yeah, it's hard to tell where the creek is on here. Um, Dean Syme, uh, is over here. Um-
Caleb, what was-
Roy Dishman-
Caleb, what was your point for bringing? Just that, the lot sizes, is that what the deal is?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I, I don't think we need to go through each person that signed that we, I want to, I think the commission wants to get to the point.
Alan Layton's over here, yeah.
Go ahead.
No.
Yeah, we don't need to know all of people.
We got this guy here from Cross-
Florence, we're gonna move on.
Okay.
Go ahead, Caleb. Go ahead. What was your point?
Uh, the only point I wanted to make is that we see a number of, of smaller lots in the immediate vicinity. You know, it was indicated that these were all large acre lots. Well, in fact, there's a five acre lot here and a five acre lot there. They got plotted, but-
Please, folks, we gotta let-
What, what we see is, once this lot get pla- got plotted out, this became a unplanted balance, or you could pull a bill-
Excuse me, I said, let's not shout from the, the audience, please.
You can get a building permit on an unplanted balance, and, because it meets the underlying zoning requirement. So, while you have a house on a five acre lot, you could pull a building permit and transfer that property as well as the balance of this property. Um, so, I suspect that because they're in limited agriculture, five acre lots, they came forward and got a, an exception to allow, uh, lot size variance.
Okay, so that was your point that you wanted to bring up, okay.
So, chairman-
Mister, Mrs. Hagcock, go ahead.
So, Caleb, back up here. So, lot one, two, three, what are the ones that have the buildings on again? That already, that you're turning into three acres?
Four.
Is it four?
Five, it's gonna be four. Four, five, six, and seven.
Yep.
First, four, five, six, and seven have-
The homes.
Want to do-
Three of them, four-
On two and three?
Four, five, and s-
Four, five, and six, and seven already have-
Are three acres. Lot seven is gonna be fifty-eight. Yep.
Four, five, and six are three acres.
Proposed, yep. And lot seven, that has a residence on it, will be fifty-eight acres.
Okay, and they want to, and there's already people on one, two, and three. That's what I was asking.
No.
They want to add one, two, and three.
Correct. That's what I was saying in the very beginning, is it seems like the issues are lot one, two, and three.
Okay, and what was discussed, why, why didn't they want one, two, and three at plannings because they believed they needed to be bigger lots now?
And density, yeah. Mark, did you go out and see this? Did you go out and look at this?
Yes.
Okay.
It's, it's crazy because it's already, i- if it wasn't, like, if the lots four, five, and six were one, two, and three, it'd be a little bit different. But you have one, three, and three, one, two, and three before that, and then we're gonna do three, three, and three, and fifty-eight point three acres. I guess my, my point is that you already have three lots with three acres below it. And you're okay with that, but you're not okay with the three acres above it. That doesn't make a lot of sense, I guess.
I think what they're saying is that the, the four houses that, three of which are on three acre plat are already there, and they've been there for a long time. I mean, the, the whole point of this is, do you want to give them, uh, three acres for lot one, two, and three? That's the question, to build on, possibly.
That's right.
And, and they're saying, well, we don't like three acres, but, uh, since this house is already there, we'll have to live with it. We don't want the new ones.
Ron, you were at the planning commission. Um, what else was discussed on the planning commission?
Uh, basically, they agreed that, uh, perhaps, uh, you shouldn't have three acre, I mean, three more three acres, that's what they thought.
Okay. Mark, you want to talk?
No.
Nope.
Not right now.
Okay.
I, Caleb.
One more time?
Thank you, sir. Um, so Caleb, you want to add more, here, if you want to come up, just for a sec, second. Here, here's, here's the biggest issue with this as well. You're on a flood hazard area, and you're gonna be adding, you already have these three acre lots, you're gonna be adding three more in a flood hazard district?
Oh, no, this, this is the boundary of the special flood hazard district. So, this area in white-
Slotted, slotted?
The hatched is all special flood hazard.
Okay.
The white area outside is buildable. It's outside the special flood hazard district.
And where's the septics? Because what I'm saying is you're gonna increase the density in a flood hazard district. You got three that already are there, and now you want to add more houses with septics in a flood hazard. What I'm saying is, to me, that, like, Greenacre, or Green Acres, whatever that, Green Valley, Green Acres, Green Valley and stuff, some of that becomes a, a, a big issue, putting more density next to flood hazard is, is where I'm thinking.
Yeah, from the limit of this special flood hazard, so this is eight, this distance here is eight hundred and thirty feet to create that. So, you see approximately half of it is in the special flood hazard, the other half's out, so that would say roughly four hundred feet.
I know, I know Caleb, but look where the slotted area is, and look where you're putting all the houses. The flood hazard, your, your lot of creek area was with adding more density next to, that's, that's my only issue. You, I understand the three acre ones, and I, I'm with you there, but now I'm looking and, and didn't understand there was that much flood hazard there.
Yeah, and these ones are existing.
Yes, sir. I understand that.
I got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. DeSanto?
Um, I understand what Kale is saying, um, as far as the size of those pieces of property is, are concerned. Depending upon where we approve the building of a home on those properties. Um, and another reason why I'd love to get Scott Hippel here, because the amount of soil that, that, uh, septic discharge needs to travel through in order to be completely okay. Um, there's plenty of room, depending upon where they put the septic on those pieces of property to give proper filtration and of, of, even if, even if the flood did come through, it's traveled far enough that it's not gonna be an issue. I understand your concern.
Right.
And, and I've always been concerned with waterway pollution, I, absolutely, but I just don't see any reason not to approve this, I-
Is that your motion?
I moved to approve the planning department's recommendation.
Okay.
I moved and seconded to approve the planning re- commission's recommendations, which is, I'll reread this.
No, no, not the planning department.
Departments, not the planning commission.
Right.
Recommendation from the planning department, okay. And that would be staff's recommendation from the approved layout plat slash seventeen forty-nine with seventeen conditions.
Correct.
Any further discussion from the board?
Sir, you have one more.
I, I, I'm going to the board first.
Just look guy in pink.
Okay, what, somebody from the audience? Or is he just-
Florence, it's-
Yes. Staff, staff recommendations are with the seventeen conditions. Planning commission's recommendations is what I read to you when you were up, you'll talk, and then-
Sir, in the pink, did you want to come up? That's who I was, I was talking about. Lord, I don't know if you saw him. He's kind of behind PJ.
Yeah, I kind of asked him, but he looked like he was-
Hello, my name is Bryce Sowards, and I live on Bratsky Road. And this may be neither here nor there, but to put a little light on it, I am going on seventy-eight years old. I have known this whole ranch when I ran clear over the Caputa, all the way to the south end of Antelope Creek Road, and on both sides of the north-south Antelope Creek Road, and, and over west to what was known as the Western Cattle Company or the Holcomb Ranch. And I worked on this ranch and li- and lived on, in fact, that's where we were when my oldest boy was born. And it was Bill Lehman back in the early nineteen hundreds that had bought this place. And then Clarence Reiser in the sixties, uh, purchased it from him. And I'm sure that Bill and Clarence would not have been for breaking it up and keeping it together as a, uh, ranch. But like I say, that's neither here nor there. But that's a light on the history of this ranch that is now, uh, being proposed to be broken up.
Thanks, Bryce. So, Bryce, you're against it getting, being divided up?
Pardon?
You're against it being divided up because you know the history?
I am.
All right, thanks, Bryce.
Yeah.
So, the motion on the floor is to, uh, approve the recommendation from staff, which would be the approval of the layout plat seventeen with the seventeen conditions.
Correct.
Any further discussions? PJ?
Just a one correction, it's a preliminary plat.
Preliminary. I leave out one word?
You said layout.
Oh.
Just making sure.
Makes a big difference.
As it does.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries now. Next, we go to item J.
Item J is the first reading and public hearing of rezon eighteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen oh two for Eric and Heidi Hendrickson, so, uh, with the approval of the preliminary plat, and then they'll have to move to a final plat. They're requesting approval of rezoning. Let me find it here. The subject properties that are going to be plotted up into non-compliance, so they're looking to bring them into compliance prior to the final plat being recorded. So, basically, lot one, two, three, four, and five, and six are requesting to rezone to low density residential, as those are gonna be at least three acres. Lot nine and ten, they're asking to rezone to limited agriculture, as they're gonna be over ten acres. And leaving lot seven and ten as general agriculture, as they'll be over ten acres. And also bringing the comprehensive plan amendment, uh, comprehensive plan into compliance. And with that, staff would recommend approval of rezon eighteen oh two and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen oh two. Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto.
Second.
Seconded by Busker to approve the rezone.
First reading.
First reading.
First reading.
Chairman.
Any further discussion, Ms. Hagcock?
Um, since it's first reading, I'll agree with this, but then I, I think I need to go out there with Kale and those guys and kind of look at those properties that you're rezoning because, um, the flood hazard is, is, I have a little bit of concern with that. But I will approve the first, but, um, like I said, I'm gonna look for more information on the property out there, um, for the second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion, PJ?
Yeah, sure. Just one thing, uh, with the preliminary plat have been, uh, recommended for approval, the next step in their process is gonna be a final plat, which is an administrative process. So, it's all gonna take care, take, um, place in our office. Um, so, if there's concern about the creating these lots, that could have an effect on the final plat.
Okay, so, maybe, can we do a continuance on this, so I can go out there and, and look at it one more time?
You can make whatever motion you want. I just wanted to let you know how the process is gonna work.
Okay. That, board, if I, motion to continue, just, just the rezone in J.
Second.
Thank you.
So, the motion is to continue to our next, uh, commission meeting, seconded by DeSanto, so you could do, do some research on flooding, and there's any further discussion?
Understand what we're doing?
Okay, you're okay with it, kid? Okay. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries to continue. Next, we come to item K. Thank you for waiting.
So, item K is a request to waive penalty fees. Uh, this is for lot eight A of lot eight of block seven of Meadow Ridge subdivision. Uh, the applicant had torn down an existing, uh, deck that went up to their second story. And in replacing the pieces of the deck, uh, they went into the setback, um, between the property lines. This actually came as a complaint to our office. Uh, the applicant knows that they need to do a building permit, um, but they also have to apply for a variance to the setback because they're right up against the property line. Now, lucky for the applicant, even though they are in a high-density area, that lot, that property line does not have an easement on it. Otherwise, they'd have to do a second process to vacate a portion of the easement. So, they had to apply for a variance, um, to, uh, for a setback variance, and the applicant is here to ask a waiver of the eight hundred dollars for the penalty fees.
May, is it Mia?
Hi, I'm a hikin', and I'm the property owner. I was just replacing my existing deck and moving my stairs from the back to, from the front to the back. And I guess I was under the impression I didn't need a building permit to replace something that was already there. I, I'm working with the planning and zoning now to get it electrified and livestock building, and I was just wondering if you guys would waive the fee. So, the eight hundred penalty fee.
Okay, Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, he, you have a building permit for your house? This is just about the deck, PJ?
Um, I've lived in my house for fifteen years, and my deck was in pretty brackety shape when I moved in, and I was just replacing it. And, um, moving the direction of the stairs from my front yard to my back. And I was also gonna put a roof on, and I didn't realize that I needed a building permit to replace something that was already existing. And it isn't a variance, so I'll have to do that as a separate because I didn't have the twelve hundred dollars to pay upfront. I'm a single mom, I have five kids, I can't, I don't have twelve hundred dollars just laying around, I'm sorry.
Okay, so you're asking today for a, what, say again?
Yeah, so-
Penalty fees, waiver-
Penalty fees of a total of eight hundred dollars. Um, so, there's a three hundred and seventy fee for the variance. And then double the permit fee and a five hundred dollar fine, so that's the eight hundred that she's asking to have waived. Uh, to answer your previous question, she has, um, pretty sure, she knows about the building permit. We just can't do any approvals on the building permit until the variance is heard.
Okay. So, I'll make the motion to waive the penalty fees.
Motion made by Hagcock to waive the penalty fees. Is there a second?
I'll second it because I know Ron's not going to.
Second, seconded by DeSanto. Further discussion?
I just have one question. So, she needs a variance because she's too close to the property line.
Right up against it.
So, the deck is how big?
It's roughly eight by ten.
So, that house was built within eight feet of the property line?
Yeah, and if you look, there's a door on the second floor.
That go out to that edge of the property line.
And she bought it, you bought this house?
I bought it that way, and the deck size I replaced it with is- I bought it that way and the deck size I replaced it with is exactly the same size that it started out with.
Wasn't, we didn't have any problem with it, we didn't even know about it until we got a complaint that it was being changed. That has to be brought into compliance. And just one thing to reiterate, um, this request is to waive the fees prior to her paying. So she, she has no problem paying the three seventy for the fee.
Okay.
It's just the eight hundred before, okay.
So then I'll have to come back and then ask Ray Bryce to do a variance on it.
Of the eight hundred, the five hundred of it is a penalty.
Correct.
But the, the fee is, what, three seventy-five is doubled?
So the variance is three hundred and seventy, the permit fee is three hundred. Twenty dollars for staff, for, uh, administrative assistant to produce the letters and do that research and fifty dollars is refundable deposit for the variance sign. So the penalty fee is double the permit fee, which is three hundred. So from three hundred to three hundred, and then an additional five hundred dollar penalty fee, that's where we get the eight hundred from.
You, the whole eight hundred or just the five hundred?
He's asking you.
The eight hundred, only because this was existing. If it wasn't existing and she didn't get stuck with this, there's a difference, but I think she could use a break.
Mr. Chair.
Are you, you done?
Yes, sir.
Mr. DeSanto.
What?
Commissioner Hancock is saying is that. If she'd have went out and built a new deck and there was no deck there in the first place, then she wouldn't be at, oh, sorry, then she wouldn't be asking to give this, um, uh, break. But since the deck was already there and she just rebuilt the deck, um, and didn't change it to anything, frankly, except for maybe putting a roof on it. If even, I don't know if you've even done that yet.
The direction of the stairs, yeah.
That, that's why she's asking for the removal of the penalty.
Right?
So the motion on the floor is to waive the penalty fees. Request to waive the penalty fees, that's what you're requesting us to do. Whatever those fees may be for penalty.
Eight hundred. Yes.
Okay, well, we've been going back and forth about the application fee and some other stuff, but we're, I just want to clarify and I think Ron's clear. On the, it's just the penalty fees, the double, okay. So we have that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Enjoy your deck.
Thank you.
Okay, folks, next we come to items from chair and commission members. Uh, item A is a request for information from DNR, invitation to Scott Hippel, environmental scientist three. I had this placed back on the agenda because after the last meeting, it was brought up. That, uh, we request Mr. Hippel to come here. Following the meeting, I think, I, I left a message for Ron because I was going to get some, or not Ron, sorry, uh, Mark. To get some clarification on, on what. The discussion was at the last meeting. Because I started reviewing some of that stuff and it seemed, when I got done with the meeting on that day, it, it come clear to me that I thought. The intentions of what you wanted was more of an educational things on, on septic systems to the public and I think. And the more I thought about this, I was thinking, we can do that in-house. Why do we need to bring somebody from out of state to come in and talk about, uh, septic systems and so forth? And I wanted to bring this, I had, put it on the agenda so we can bring it to, you know, talk about it in public, I think. Because the request Scott Hope, uh, Hippel is supposed to be. How do you say it, the chairman has to make that request and I want to get input and I think when we talked about this way back. I still wanted to get the commission's input on this to see if that's something we want to do because. If you're going to bring Scott Hippel, it's, it's different than just giving the information, I mean, that's, you, I. I guess I need clarification on, on what it is you want, is it something we can do in-house? Why does it have to be specifically Mr. Hippel to talk about septic systems? I just, I, I, that'd be, I just, I need more clarification and then I'll go to the board and ask what, what they think.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair. The reason that I'm requesting Scott Hippel is because Scott Hippel is probably the foremost expert on septic and environmental. He's an envi- environmental scientist, he, he runs the state. Environmental department as far as, as far as specifically septic is concerned. And he's voiced willingness to come and speak to us, uh, to give us, you know, basically like the information that, that I just talked about. Um, out there in Caputa, that there's no need for concern. Um, I think that he could ease the, the thought process that if we're fifty foot, fifty yards from a stream. That the, that the water isn't going to be treated properly before it re- reaches that stream. By a properly working septic system. And I think he'd be able to go over that and explain it very clearly to everyone. How, how septic systems are built, how they function, what the requirements are as far as soil composition, um, and, and everything. Um, I, I find, I feel that it would be. It, not only informational, but interesting. And it would help us make decisions in the future in this regards when, when we have some people, um, that are. And I guess I, I shouldn't maybe refer back to when we had to vote on the, on the asphalt plant. But emotions get high when people are thinking that something's going to poison them. When in all fact, if, if you take all things into consideration, air traffic, air patterns and. What the chemicals heated to, it's three hundred feet in the air before it gets anywhere, um. When you get all that information put together, it's easier to make a decision and, and know that you're not trying to poison people. I guess.
Okay.
Or that you care that you're not poisoning people.
Just a minute. You know, the reason why I asked this, Mark, is because I wanted to get this straightened out. When I left the meeting last week, that, the intention I got from leaving that is it was more educational to, to teach the public and so forth. My concern is, is we have lawsuits that's out there. And, and quite frankly, until that's cleared up as chairman, I'm not going to request something like that. Like Scott Hippel to come in until that's clarified and, and done with. Educational wise, if, if Brittany or somebody else wanted to have a class and talk about septic systems and how they work to educate the public. How to treat them, how to work, you know, uh, keep them, maintain them, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I think. On my side, I just, I would, I would prefer this lawsuit to get dealt with and not bring in any more. Bring someone here that could be possible, I don't know, I'm not going to put any intentions out there, I just, that's, that's my thoughts. And I just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I see where you're going and, and I understand where you're going. But I see, um, I can't see where this could en- in any way possibly harm anything. Or, or, um, influence anything other than to teach us more about. Protecting the environment and how septic systems are, are built and, and. That is certainly to influence any decision that's made, um, regarding a septic lawsuit or whatever. It's not my intention, never has been, never will be.
Okay.
Chairman.
That's, that's what, good to know, Ms. Hancock?
Mark, I think your, your intentions are good for, um, bringing Mr. Hippel here. I think if they, if Brittany and those guys want to put on a class or put on something, um, totally in favor of that, but, um, keep saying us, which I appreciate in one sense and the other. Um, if I want to learn something, um, if you're talking about the public, that's fine, so let's have a class or some kind of seminar or if that's. I would go talk to Brittany and see if we could do something like that. Um, so I'm totally in favor of that, but just having them come here and say, okay, commission, we're going to teach you and we're going to teach the public. Um, I think, um, is a little different. And so like I said, I, I would be in favor of you talking to Brittany and bringing Mr. Hippel and not just Mr. Hippel. But maybe some people that, um, pump septic and different things like that, I've thought of that for a long time. And then I also think if, if you're looking to move forward to change in the septic ordinances, that's a good way to start. Um, or just say, well, I've learned a lot and what we're doing is amazing, so, um, again, I don't think it needs to have a request for Mr. Hippel yet. I think there needs to be more information and more things added to than just Mr. Mr. Hippel.
I'm happy to get as much information as po- as.
So maybe, Mark, if you could work with, Mark with, Mark, work with Brittany in, in the planning department and see if there's an interest not just for you. You know, or the commission, and we have that option to go, but, um, Brittany might have some classes and things we can go, so.
Okay, I think, I see a hand raised out there, Ms. Brittany?
Uh, Brittany Molliter, environmental planning supervisor, every two years that the county actually puts on a training for the installers. And it's been going on since two thousand twelve, um, it's in our budget, it's going on this year again, October fifth, two thousand eighteen. Um, there's a professional from Minnesota, the University of Minnesota, coming out and they go over troubleshooting, all different kinds of things. Scott is typically there, the city of Ractisity is there, Mead County's there, all of the surrounding areas, there is a fee for it. Um, commissioners have come in the past, county commissioners and planning commissioners, um, but that typically goes every two years in October. So there are lots of professionals, um, like I said, this year, University of Minnesota, and then there's also a representative from, um, what's called Infiltrator. It's a technology that a lot of our installers use, so he's coming out to, um, speak, so that's going to happen in October of this year. But that is an opportunity for the commissioners or the planning commissioners to attend.
Okay, so that's in October, Brittany?
Just let me know ahead of time because there is lunch involved, so I have to make sure I order enough.
And she's, Ms. Hancock just making a point, that's not the public, that's, that's a fee paid.
Right, anybody can go, um, we, uh, advertise it in the newspaper, we send out flyers, there's information available. Um, like I said, there is a fee because we do have to pay for the professionals to come out, um, and there's food.
Just, just a thought, Brittany, and, and just a little bit that I've heard from Hancock and, and DeSanto and myself. What are your thoughts of holding a class that talks about the maintain, you know, some type of public information, meaning that we could do a PSAs to get pe- the public into. How to maintain them, explain them, and the reason why I ask this is because I looked at some property over last weekend and I asked a realtor, what about this? And, and they're not getting really informed too well about what. How to upkeep a septic system or when it's been worked on, they don't know, I mean. So I, I'm thinking an educational, a public educational class we could hold or something that could help folks out.
Um, and I think it would possibly be appropriate, especially with the pumping and observation requirements, understanding why it's required. I know through that process, through the permitting process, I know a lot of the pumpers have been educating. Uh, we have some really good installers that educate, that work with homeowners. But there's a lot of people that are moving into the area that have never had a septic system, they don't, you know, they, they just assume they're connected to something. Um, so, eh, you know, and I think that the realtors are an important group, you know, in the education process and. Uh, when Louis Arwila was at the city, he, I and Bill Rich with Mead County went and spoke to the realtors. They have a luncheon on Tuesday mornings in the civic center, we've done that before, so, um, it's, we've done things like that before.
And just to, to inform us on that October fifth, I think in the public, getting that out a little bit more, I think that's. That's kind of what I was thinking anyway, and you guys already do it and I apologize, I, I'll, I'll tell you, if you've sent that out, I never heard about it, but I'll be there this year, okay?
Ron, did you have any put?
No. That'd be a good idea, the October thing.
While I'm in agreement that the October thing would be a great idea, um, one thing that concerns me and, um, I've never not been verbal about this when it comes to conflicts of interest. But if, if it's being put on by people that are, that are possibly going to benefit from what they tell people. Um, whether that be, and I'm not saying that they are, I'm just pointing this out.
Right.
If they can benefit from it, there's a possibility that their speeches will be. Leaning towards what might give them some additional business.
Right.
You know, whereas Mr. Hippel has no. Get in the game, I guess, so to speak, um, there, he, there's no way he can, he can, uh, present something to, uh, benefit him.
Okay, thank you, Mark, I think we've gotten enough information on this, I brought this up to, just so it could be aired out. And I think we got some good information and it, and I think I may might call it clear, you know, I'm more than willing to call Scott after this lawsuit's done.
Okay.
I mean, just to, but I, I appreciate, that's what I need to know is what your intentions were and so forth and that. And that, and that, I think we've come up with some good solutions on this, but some training and that type of thing. And I'll, I'll think about it and I may give Scott a call and just see where, where he feels, but.
Great.
I'm just going to be straight up.
But I think, but I think if the public is there, then those questions, whether you like what they're saying or not, and that's including me. Um, I'm going to question that, so, um, and you know, I mean, by now, Mark, if I don't believe you, I'm going to come back with more information or. So that also can be questioned and then move forward on that, on some of the things, maybe that'll show us, maybe we do need some changes in septic or we don't.
Gotcha.
So, I think that's going to make a big difference.
Alright, thank you, folks, I think we know where we're going on that, committee reports.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeSanto.
Um, went to the, to the extension building, uh, or the extension meeting and, uh, again, we're looking for an AED. They've had several, uh, um, our emergency management guy has gotten ahold of Matt out there and they've. And, and they've given him several different options as to what type of AED they want at that building, but in order to, I believe, in order to protect us. We need to get that AED out there, it's all been approved and it's paid for because they're going to use, uh, funds, they had, um, a secretary quit. And then didn't replace her for three months and they're going to just use those funds that they would have paid the secretary to pay for the AED, so it's, it's not going to cost us any additional money to have that. Um, so Jerome is working with Matt to get that done. And then I went to the, um, LEPC meeting and then there's going to be some trainings coming up in the near future for hazmat. Education, uh, specifically having to do with, uh, pipeline and that kind of, that kind of stuff, possible pipeline spill and, and that kind of deal. And then, uh, there was a suggestion and I thought it was a great idea by one of the, uh, representatives there. That we maybe also do some mock-up on. When, on preparing for kind of what happened up in North Dakota when they wanted to put the pipeline to and how we're going to, if that happens. What are we going to do to handle that situation better than it was handled up there as far as protests are concerned? And, uh, and then I did attend the, the assessors convention and went to multiple classes. And again, like I mentioned earlier, um, to Gordon. One of the classes that, that impressed me most was an environmental impact on the. What houses should be assessed at based on flood zones, flood plains, um. Soil composition, you name it, and then they, and then I also went to the one that determines how they, how they come up with land values when it comes to ag land and, and, and that. So it was all very interesting, one thing that I, that I saw without a doubt and, you know, we saw it here with that reward that they got, these guys are thorough. Um, and I encourage the public. If you think that you're not getting assessed correctly, the very best thing you can do is get ahold of the assessor's office and say, come look at my home. Come look throughout my home, because as we learned from wall. They did a proper job of assessing. But once they were aware of what was going on in the actual home itself, it, it gave them a whole different viewpoint of, of what. Of what to assess those homes at, I mean, we reduced a lot of those homes by a giant margin because basically their basements are falling in. And nobody knew that from the outside, but once you got inside, you could, so, anyway, that's it for me.
Thanks, Mark, Ms. Deb?
Um, sorry I missed that, uh, assessors convention, uh, my family was in town and I heard it from Joe, um, who.
um, who is from equalization, he's actually put on that and it was amazing. I mean, people from, that went to that, that weren't even, you know, up in the assessors office, just were telling me all kinds of awesome. That was the most organized, that was pretty awesome.
Cool.
So, um, also, um, fire board, boy, we've had a lot of fires this last couple of years, and I volunteer in our current fire departments, so thank you for everything they do. Um, that's amazing board, and our firefighters do a lot for us, whether they're our city or our county ones, so we really appreciate them. I know as a commission, and I do like going there, um, to the meetings, cause they also have good food, so. But, um, the, uh, chamber didn't have one, of course, cause they were doing other stuff, you know, with the yes vote and stuff, so I didn't, there wasn't one to go to there, but other than that, I'm good, sir.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, Ron, do you have anything? The only thing I wanna pass on, I probably should've put it on something else, but, um, we attended the Mount Rushmore Road reopening yesterday with ribbon cutting, which was very amazing. One of the comments that was made was when they designed that road, DOT talked about nineteen forty, it was supposed to have a fifty-year life expectancy, and here you are, nineteen forty, what is it, two thousand? Eighteen is now when they finally got it completed, redone and redone and so forth. Made me think of Sheridan Lake Road and, and, I'm just, I'm just saying, guys, if something happens, that's what, stuff gets keep and put, but I just wanted to mention that. And then I did the ribbon cutting for the courthouse entrance, but one of the things I wanted to highlight, folks, is is when I was in Sioux Falls and webbing, I took the time out to go down to Minnehaha County. Uh, the meeting ran kinda late, I had a meeting with the chairperson of the, of Minnehaha County Commission, but they couldn't wait for me. So, but I met with, uh, Craig Dewey and we discussed some of the differences of what goes on between Pendleton County and Minnehaha. And he's actually, uh, it was very informative, he does some lobbying too, and so, uh, we got together and talked that maybe we could work together on some items that may come forward, and I think that was really good. I know I'll be taking future trips that, that way, and I can start building that relationship with Minnehaha on a volunteer pitch. But some of the good things that came from that conversation, I'll probably bring up some stuff later on, once I get some research and so forth, but I just wanted to bring people aware of some of the stuff that, you know, I'm researching on, one of the things he, Craig had talked, and I asked him about training for commission, I said, what do you guys do for training and, and travel for commission, you know? And it just hit me, really good, one of the good things that they do is each commissioner is allotted so much for training and travel. You manage your own budget, each one gets this, if you exceed it, it's out of your pocket. If not, and he said some use not, some and some use none, it all depends on where they're at, but it, at that point, they, they kinda go through it and they kinda decide how that works, and I just thought that was enlightening. I don't have enough information on everything to make that a good presentation to this commission as far as like, I, I'd mentioned earlier in the meeting that I, I think with, uh, the national BNAKO, I think we need to have commissioners go to at least one a year, you know, but again, that's, we have to budget for them type of stuff. You know, I, I really believe that's something we need to do, but it's not gonna happen this budget cycle, it's not.
Right.
But just be aware of that, something that we'll probably look into and want to start doing. Um, the other thing that, when I was in, uh, Clearwater, one of the things that the staff has been talking about is possible building inspectors, that type of stuff. When I was there, I'd seen it right up on an article that they were dealing with some building inspectors, they'd actually hired out on subcontractors to do the building inspection, cause we have some problems in, in Pendleton County. You know, we, we issued the building permits and then we got no way, and then people come back and said they didn't build it the way it should be. It's just something to start thinking up, put on your radars about that, we're gonna have to start looking into and so forth, but, um, those are probably the two things that I wanted to share so far.
That's for all the work you did.
Yeah, thanks, Lloyd.
You know, you took your time out on vacation and stuff to go do that, and we appreciate that, Lloyd, because it, you know, um, sometimes that gives us better ideas of how to do things and bringing forth that is a good thing.
I'd tell you, I really like that training budget for each commissioner, I really do. And I'll, I'm gonna look into that and, and, oh, now you guys got me going. One of the other things I'm, I, I gathered some information on is the Board of Equalization, equalization. I'm gonna start gathering some information, I think we'd have to change legislation and so forth, but we could bring that to the Black area of, of commissioners if we can start working on it. I think, my belief is I think the Board of Equalization should be made up of, of some assessors and so forth. I, I, I'm not saying county commissioners aren't educated or anything like that, but you're dealing with the numbers and I think it's fair that our, our, our equalization, that they're facing somebody that knows what they're dealing with day by day. It, it's a thing that we can legislati- laterally we'd have to do, but we're doing some of the research now, is what it is. So, that's another thing we're looking at.
Chairman, um, I also think we should look into seeing who, who should be on that board besides assessors. Because if you got fifty-three percent of that being, you know, property taxes being school board, it should, they should be able to change that board so it'd be more adjusted to, you know, a couple, uh, or at least, I, I don't know if it's one or two, but, um, I, I'd like to see a different makeup and then kinda see where we need to go with it, but I have no idea at this point, I just think it doesn't need to just be county commissioner.
Well, and that's, it's just we're looking into it, but you're right, it doesn't have to be assessors, it could be realtors, it could be a couple others. I just wanted to bring that out there so if you hear anything, that's what we're researching. Okay.
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Moved by Busker, seconded by Hagcock to approve the vouchers. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, motion approved unanimously. Uh, no, any items from the public? Seeing none, there's no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by DeSanto, seconded by Hagcock to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion.